All right, it is 5:46, so we'll go ahead and get started. Are there any questions about the agenda tonight? I mean, you had one you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, I'd like to move the discussion about the fire museum from the last to the first item, so that I could go say goodnight early.
Any objection? All right, any other questions about the agenda tonight? Tandy, any updates from you?
I do have two very quick updates, just a reminder, I think you all got an email. We do have next week a conversation about your rules of order and procedure. And so it was an opportunity, if there's things that people want to discuss as a part of that, there are going to be a few staff refinements that we're going to be suggesting and walking through from a public safety perspective. But if there are interests from a council perspective to talk about, either get that information to Robert Christen by the end of day tomorrow, or certainly if there's specific feedback tonight, we can take that as well. A second, just update, I did have a comfort conversation with council member Martinez. I have not had an opportunity to see hearing this for the first time. You know, there's been some requests over time in the past two, our planning sessions, these aren't formal meetings, so we don't take formal minutes or produce minutes. Every once in a while, we'll get requests from council members for those informal meeting notes. So just sort of as a standing practice, we intend to start just sharing those with the council. And so it will be very clear on them that they are not, we don't edit them, they're not a formal record of the meeting, but just so that everybody has access to that same information. So keep your expectations where they are, because they really are the staff's working notes from these meetings. They're very different than minutes that get edited, voted on, and become part of the official record. So that just.
Will they be marked just to say these are not official records? So that in case members of the public see it, they know to expect it different?
We will, it will probably say it multiple ways to make the point clear that this is not an official meeting, there's not official actions, and they're not official records. They're not official minutes.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
And for Berta and then Karen.
Well, I just wanted to bring up that I understand that Maker Housing has approached staff with some options for the housing project, and that those options might address some of the concerns of the community. And so last week, I wasn't aware that we could have postponed the vote, so I want to request that staff review the options and bring back possible alternatives for the council's consideration as soon as they possibly can.
Any objection? I don't know, hearing any objection.
So I do think, just to be clear at this point, without Maker resubmitting the project, that would need to be a vote of reconsideration, which could happen, and we can walk through and prepare information about the procedural steps that it would take for a request of reconsideration.
So a couple of things on that, that would have to be done at the next regular meeting. So that would have to be done next Tuesday night by someone who voted on the prevailing side, which in this case is the side that voted against. Your rules allow for that, so if that motion comes forward, and we'll take a look at the Maker changes, you know, if they're, if they're consistent with testimony we've heard at the public hearing, there may not be a need to open up the public hearing again. My understanding is they proposed lowering one side of the building to two stories from three stories. So information on that was really covered at the public hearing. So I don't see if that's the only change, which would change the parking ratio and increase that, a need to go back into the public hearing. You could technically, but we'd want to post it, vote again on first reading next week if a motion to reconsider was brought and passed. Now, council has the, you know, the option to reopen the hearing. So I would say that's optional. So if council wanted to reopen the hearing on the limited changes that Maker is proposing, we could certainly schedule that too, and reopen the public hearing before a vote on first reading.
So I think what I would propose is we add this to the update next week, and we can walk through procedurally what the choices are, and have some draft motions available, so that that could be discussed ahead of the meeting. That doesn't seem, does that make sense?
But I would like to take any questions at this point, because I want to make sure, you know, it could move rather quickly, or it doesn't have to move that quickly. So.
Karen, was yours related to this or separate?
No, it was separate.
And Justin and Chris.
Yes. You also wanted to reopen the public hearing. At what point would that decision be made?
Well, it would have to be on the record next week. So the cleanest way, obviously, is to do a motion to consideration next for reconsideration. If that would pass, to schedule again on first reading the ordinance as amended with the changes, and schedule a limited public hearing to discuss those changes at the following meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that decision would be made after, alongside the motion to reconsider?
It could go either way, is what I'm saying to you. Yeah, and so I don't know the urgency, but if you wanted first reading to come back to you, there's a potential for it to come back next week if the motion to reconsider passed. But it might be cleanest to schedule it for the next regular meeting, which would be, I believe, what is the next regular meeting?
Fourteenth of October.
Yeah, October 7th.
I mean, the.
No, 14th, October 14th, yeah. And then a second reading on.
Chris?
So if we were to open the hearing back up for the limited content, that would allow them for additional public comment, correct?
Yes.
Then we think we should do, we go that route.
I would agree. All right, so we'll look for those options of what that might look like, what we'd have to do, should it be, if Baker is in a hurry to have that discussion next week. We can talk about it at the update. All right.
I wanted to come back to the rules of order and procedure, and just ask you guys, we've talked a little bit about the not being able to be on meetings remotely past four times. I don't know if there's interest in looking into changing that or not, but I wanted to bring it up.
I think we could ask the question of what other cities are doing related to that time limit. The other thing I wanted to consider is, and I'll put this in the email as well, so you don't have to necessarily take notes about it, was the options for the entire council to go online. Because if we're remote, if one person is remote, we're not able to participate in a public hearing, but if the entire council is remote, they can, based on our current rules. And so, but we can only go fully remote for weather events, not anything else. So there could be other situations where maybe we're traveling, I mean, the whole council is traveling for whatever reason, or there's an outbreak of something, or some other random reason, instead of just being a weather-related event. Roberta?
Would that allow us to have more meetings every year? We have it during travel, like NLC or something?
Potentially. If we needed them. Maybe we could do that anyway, but we'd have to be all online for that. We have to change our rules of order to do that. But so as you guys are thinking about those things, send them into the email that I think Rob sent it out, and then we can have the research done, what other cities are doing as well. Anything else, Tandy?
That's it.
Anything from you, Tammy?
No.
All right, let's jump into the item F, the fire museum.
This is a very limited presentation. There was, there've been two longer presentations. And so this really summarizes the, what we believe was the majority viewpoint, the direction around next steps with the fire museum. Do you have a little bit more information, just to be clear about what that impact of that decision would be to essentially invest some limited additional funding to stabilize the building and return to the status of a fire museum as it sort of operated prior? So the city already does have a number of donated exhibits that would be returned. Just new exhibits would not be developed, and additional improvements would not be made. So I'd turn it to Chris Mollison, just to summarize what we believe we heard out of the conversation, again, to try to speak to what that state would be, and that was the direction from the council. That's what we've got the chief.
Thank you. So not, not a whole lot to add to what Tandy just said, just to summary of a couple of meetings that we've had, and we think we heard a informal kind of discussion last time about potentially not moving forward with that, but also wanted to talk about some other options. But there were a couple of questions that were asked, that we were asked to follow up before any formal decisions were made, mostly with regard to fundraising. And so the chief had looked into that, and I wanted to make sure that he got a chance to respond to that before we move forward.
Chris? Hi. I can answer a couple of questions that I think came up last time. One was on the amount of fundraising that had occurred up to this point. There's a total of $6,950 that have been raised by the Fire Museum Subcommittee Group. That, right now, is being held, has not been spent by the Thornton Fire Foundation. There was a separate question about the 501(c)(3) status of the Fire Museum Subcommittee. Right now, we have two 501(c)(3)'s that are very strongly affiliated with the fire department. Number, the first one is the Thornton Fire Foundation, which has been, I would say, a very close partner with the Fire Museum Subcommittee, and then our other foundation that we have is called the Never Forgotten Foundation, which is also very directly associated with the fire department. And certainly, one or both of those could be utilized to help support applying for grants or other funding resources, using that 501(c)(3) status to apply for funding towards future exhibits or other grant opportunities. That answers, if I'm missing any questions, council. Questions, any follow-up questions on fundings or grants?
Tony?
I don't have any questions, I just like to speak my piece on this. If anybody else has a question, they'd like to ask Chris or Steve.
We have a couple more slides, too. You want to wait till that slides are finished, or you want to talk first?
I have a little one.
We have a couple more slides?
Okay.
Last two, okay. Put you down this first half of the slides.
So again, just based on kind of how we ended the last meeting a week ago, what we thought we heard from at least a majority of city council was at least not moving forward with the project at this time, buttoning up the site and the building, which would take roughly $50,000 to do that, just to make sure that the site and facility were secure, putting the $2.3 million back in the Parks and Open Space Fund for future use, potentially going back to the temporary museum concept, where we did have folks in that building. You know, that was at least one Saturday a month, potentially more than that. Potentially using some of the money that Steve had talked about to either buy additional exhibits for that, and/or use it to get additional grants for additional exhibits. And then if city council wanted to make some decisions about future use for that money, they could go back into that fund. In addition, there were some alternatives, again, that we've talked about before, allocating the additional almost million dollars and moving forward with the project as is, allocating about half of that, and moving forward with the project without the exhibits, and trying to get those through other means. And we talked about both of those last times as well. So no new alternatives, just a reminder of what the discussion was last time.
And we were able, I think this information was not available at the time, if we had to get to pack it out, we were able to contact the bidders, and we do have one of three bidders that is willing to extend. It is not the most competitive of the bids, but two of the bidders were not willing to extend their bids.
Tony, you're up.
Well, I feel very strongly about the museum, and that is alternative two, is my choice and my recommendation. And the museum, I know we've had some meetings this year about it, talked about it pretty good and everything, but this hasn't just started this year, hadn't started last year. I have a report back in 2000, pretty good report that was put together in 2022. Another one was put together in 2024, and a lot of people working on this. A lot of citizens have been participating. The citizen group that you talked about, they have a tent at the Thornton Fest every year, and they're trying to get the word out and tell everybody about the museum and what goes on. But there's so much more, we call it the fire museum, but there's so much more that goes on at the museum than just the fire museum. That's Thornton history. And, and, and yes, it's connected to the fire department, because in the beginning of time, that's really how this city got started, was all of the city fathers were volunteer firemen. They met over in the quasimacan, they got things going. And, and to take this project, that, as I said, this is the past four years, and previous councils have been working on this project. And to take all of this and say, well, we're going to shut it down and what have you, does not add up with me, because history has shown in the past, start up and get it going again usually doesn't happen. It loses momentum, loses interest, and away it goes. And so I can't see that we have put all this time and effort into it, and especially with the 70th anniversary next year, and, and how this could connect and be a part of the original Thornton and the Thornton Shopping Center, and all, all come together. It just doesn't work with me about, and, and I do, I know an awful lot of retired firemen, I know a whole bunch of them that are working down there right now, that are in favor of it. And when this project first started, it was a Tascow project, and then moved over to Parks and Rec, and then came over to the fire department, where really properly belongs with a fire department. And, and, and I may be speaking out of place, but I'm speaking for a lot of the people that I know in the fire department, they would like to have this museum. The fire union has gone out and bought a fire truck that they want to place in the, in the museum and show, and, and that may, that may not happen. And I think that would be a terrible thing to tell our fire union and our firefighters that we're not interested in showing your apparatus anymore. So I, I, I can't say enough that this is more than the fire museum, and I can give you a whole lot of history about when I used to listen to fire trucks responding forever, because there was only one fire station in this town. Now, what, Chief, eight number, eight coming? How about that? Okay, well, I think this is just going to be a real good compliment to all the progress and everything that we've made in the fire department, in the city. And thank you for listening to me.
And Justin and Dave?
Yeah, I think council member on, I make some good points. In fact, I want to thank him for taking the time to meet with me last year, and we discussed the original plan, and to give me the perspective on that. Ever since I met with him and some of these residents, I had, I showed the same perspective, so. Yeah, I will continue to be in favor of option two, and, and seeing this project through the.
Dave?
In favor of option two, say anything more than Tony said?
Others? Let's go.
I can definitely agree with Tony, your perspective on this, it's just a hard, I don't know where we're going to come up with an additional almost million dollars. So I struggle with that. I guess, I don't, I see your points on all of it, though, I definitely do. But I don't know where we will come up with that money. And I guess number three, is that on top of what we're already spending, an additional 473?
It's on top of the roughly $3 million that is in the budget right now. If we wanted to do option three, we need roughly a half million dollars. If we need option two, we need roughly another million dollars.
I guess, I guess, I don't know where we come up with that. I haven't heard where that money comes from, and so I'm just saying to move forward without actually having the funding.
Yeah, in a prior presentation, we had talked about sources of funds. We didn't easily identify other projects that could be eliminated without consequence. And so I think the recommendation at the time was to pull funds either from the Parks Special Revenue Fund balance or the General Fund fund balance, were the recommendations at that time.
Well, I guess without knowing that, as much as I would not want to, just put it on hold and start it again later. Really see any other.
Others? Chris, Karen, Roberta, Jerush? There is not clear consensus at this point, so we need more voices, please.
I'm in favor of option one. I saw this project for a long time. I think all the points Tony makes are great, and it's a, it's a hard decision. But the thing is, is there've been a lot of projects, especially being on Tascow for as long as I was, where we had multiple studies for the Performing Arts Center. We spent tons of money on these different folks to come in and do consulting, and then we, we can't move forward with the projects. And I know that this is like another example of that, but I would love to see in Parks and Rec, moving forward, that we have, just, I think it's, and maybe this is happening now with strategic planning, but we can't continue to like do these, these projects, or these consulting firms, and pay them tons of money to create projects that end up having to go on a shelf. So this happened with Lambert, Lambertson Farms, it's happened with the Performing Arts Center, and this is another one. And I, you know, as much as I'd love to fund these, these things, it's just that like, and you all know how much I am in favor of museums and art, it's after being on council and seeing what the bigger budget ramifications are, it's difficult for me to say that we can just take another million dollars on top of the $2.3 million in consideration of like, we have a hard time even spending $10,000 on small little events, or, you know, redoing Oz Gallery, so it gets more, more foot traffic than it has right now. And we have a gallery sitting over there, and I'd love to know what the numbers are on that, and what the numbers were of unique visitors to those two locations, to know truly how many people are coming into these, into these venues and checking out what we have going on in the Arts and Culture Department. And I, I think one, one of the bigger things, I think, is, is interesting about this, is it did move from Tascow, which is an advisory board, to Parks and Rec, and then over to the fire department. But if we're going to talk about it as a holistic display of our city's history, it would have to go back into a cult, some sort of cultural department that would be able to oversee a full array of different types of exhibits that would bring people in. So there's just a lot of unanswered questions around what the exhibits are going to look like in the future, and how we're able to make this into a holistic museum. So for those reasons, I would have to stay, say I want to stay with number one.
James, you mentioned you hadn't been able to easily identify where we would source the funds or what other projects to cut. Is there any information you can share on projects that were on that shortlist, or what was being considered? If it does go forward, then I'm assuming one of those might be the project that we don't see.
I don't think we recommended any projects to be eliminated. I think at the outset, we recommended, if the city, if the council wished to move forward, to take an allocation from fund balance. I think there was feedback, informal discussion at the time, that there was concern about pulling funds from the Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund balance, given future needs around the pool. I think that was even, that we, we could certainly come back and share projects that are budgeted in both the Parks and Special Revenue Fund and in the, in the General Fund, both for 25. Frankly, I think at this point, we're talking about 2025. Again, we did previously hold, reallocate money from other projects for the emergency repairs of the pool. So I think, you know, to some degree, and then we held some other projects, given concerns with the, with budget performance. So I can remind, bring back those projects that we've already either reallocated funding from or held. So I do think we're left with some harder choices. I, the only one that I can recall, and I know we have Erica sent her, sent her here, I believe we did look at Brantner Gulch as an option. But I'd rather go back and revisit that analysis and get it back to you. But I don't, I think at this point, any of the capital projects would have had more significant impacts on, and I think that's why we recommend that balance.
You can go back.
Yeah, I hate to put Erica on the spot. Erica, I, I recall we, we looked at Brantner Gulch. Was, do you recall what the other projects that we looked at?
There's a number of projects that are sort of slowly finishing up in the Parks and Open Space Fund, as well as other special revenue funds. For example, we have some public art funds that are, the public art projects are finishing up. We do have some savings in those that we could pull from. The community center is currently finishing up. I think there's some limited savings there. That wouldn't require cancellation of projects. So we might be able to cobble together some savings. I don't think we'd have a million dollars of savings. So then there are some projects that I think are currently budgeted, that have yet to begin. So we always have a number of capital, trail expansion, and then trail repairs that we could look to potentially canceling. I can't speak to the specifics of those right now. The only other large projects I can really think of would be like Ailer Open Space, which I don't think there would be an interest in pulling from at this time. But offhand, those are the, those are the projects.
Karen, Jerush?
Could you tell me what the 50K would be going to pay for?
That I talked about?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the site has already been, at least started temporarily in terms of some of the facility improvements. They've already removed asbestos, they've already done some things. And so we would need to certainly tighten up the site itself, make sure that it was secure, that people couldn't walk through it anymore, the facility itself. Make sure that those, that is now, once again, secure. Right now, it's basically a construction site. And so we just need to make sure that we spend money, and so no one can get in and out of the building or in and out of the site anymore, particularly if we're about to turn it into a temporary building with people going in and out of. We just may need to make sure that people walking through there are going to be safe, not going to be tripping over something in a construction zone, things like that. If you need specifics, I'm happy to get them to you, but it's basically making the site and the building secure.
And what displays are going to be, need to be returned if we don't move forward with this?
We have a number of donated exhibits, equipment, that were donated from retired firefighters. We moved out of the museum into storage space, and we would bring them back into sort of the same type of display settings they were in before. So that's essentially the extent of that.
Is that returning them to the owners, or is that returning them to the old museum?
To the old museum.
Okay.
So right now, we've removed them all to keep them secure during, during the planned construction. So that would be bringing them back to that space.
Move forward with it, because still being it, I don't think would be an option. I, I agree with what Tony said, it probably would never be restarted.
Karen or Chris? Um, I, I really need to know what's going to be cut before I can, I mean, I would, I would have expected that to be part of this presentation, to be honest. If I'm being asked to spend a million dollars and take that away from somewhere else, I need to know where that's being taken away from.
So, so again, the staff recommendation is not to reduce something. The staff recommendation is to allocate from fund balance. It's a.
Not losing something to get something.
That's not, that's the staff's recommendation. The staff's, so number two, where it says from fund balance, that is the staff recommendation, if it were to move forward.
So to move our balance lower than we normally would in order to do so, but.
So just a reminder of prior conversations, we have, we have intentionally been trying to grow the fund balance in the Parks and Special Revenue. in the Parks and Special Revenue Funds in anticipation of largely future pool repairs. And so there, there is sufficient capacity, growing capacity in the Parks and Special Revenue Fund balance. I think there was initially some concern about making an allocation from the Parks Special Revenue Funds, fund balance because of those future needs. Again, some of the savings that Erica spoke to, some of those will end up in the general fund, fund balance. There, there would be sufficient funding in general fund, fund balance as an alternative to, to this. But it is not the staff's recommendation to reduce a project in order to facilitate this expenditure. That would be an option with direction.
With the repairs that we intended to make to the pools, do you have an estimate on the longevity? Because those repairs last five, 10 years. How long? We, what will we get return wise? I know it's a Band-Aid, but.
I don't think we know that at this particular point. We can get an update to the council. I know that they were having an assessment from a third party now that, that we've gotten through the pool season. Some of those repairs were made before the pool season. I think some of those repairs are being made now. And so I think there is a deeper assessment of how much time those investments have bought us, but I don't think we, I think the hope was three to five years. But I don't think we have a formal assessment that could, could be longer. I know they're, they're, they're measuring things like water loss and other kinds of things to evaluate how effective those repairs were.
Love the Fire Department. I struggle with the money, but if we have the money available in the fund balance, then I agree with Tony. I don't, I had a lot of conversations this week and the longevity of this project and it going through a few different councils and never getting across the finish line has been constant burden for them in terms of when will it get done? So we I don't think it's the best spend of money, and I'll say that out loud, because I don't know how this will, what kind of implications this has long term. And some of those questions I think are still somewhat unanswered and I think Councilmember Sangra and Vigolo brought those up too. But at this point, we can move forward with the project.
That is five that says move it forward. Jessica?
I just want to understand what this means because I'm not for sure I understand. We don't have a million dollars at this point for this, so we're going to have to pull it out of the general fund that we don't really know exists. Or what? I don't understand where this money is coming from.
I, the staff's recommend, this was, this project was initially funded by Parks Special Revenue Fund. So the, the staff's recommendation would, there is fund balance available sufficient to cover the costs, and that would be the staff's recommendation. Because that was the, that was the fund that funded it originally. I think we had heard concern from the council about using that fund balance as an alternative. There would, there is general fund fund balance that could be appropriated.
So there is funding in the general or in the Parks Special Revenue Fund to pay for that 973,000?
In fund balance. So funds that are not allocated, so funds that have accumulated that haven't been, that aren't spent. So again.
So like a savings place? And how much is in the fund balance?
There's about, so we think about multiple special revenue funds combined, all of the ones that can fund Parks and Rec projects. So in total, right now, we've got about $8 million in fund balance across those different special revenue funds. There's certainly adequate amount just within the Parks and Open Space Fund, which is where this project is currently being funded out of.
I guess I don't really understand then why we're having this conversation about number one, if we had to find an extra million dollars, but there's a million dollars in there. I, I guess I don't really understand why we're having this conversation then.
So your, your fund balance is funds that are, that are, have not been appropriated for funding. It weren't intended to be spent. And so and, and I think, so the, the, really the question was, do we, did the council wish to spend a million more on this project?
And I think it wasn't finding a million dollars. The question was, the budget came back a million dollars higher than expected. Is the council still okay moving forward?
I think it was just because we also talked about we're a million or $2 short in our budget from the other fund, that it seemed like on top of that, now we have to find a million dollars to figure out how to pay for this. So I, I think, and, and then to top on top of that, that we might have to cut projects ones from other projects. It just seemed like we didn't have any money anywhere at all, and now we're just scratching the bottom. So if we take a million out of this $8 million, what's the normal threshold that we try to keep? And how far below that are we going?
So there isn't really, there's no like reserve policy as it relates to the special revenue funds. And these are really capital heavy funds. So the way that we normally use them as we build up a balance, we spend it down on large projects. So $8 million isn't particularly high or low for this fund. But it does have sort of a cumulative effect. And so what we had discussed previously with council during the budget review was we are trying to sort of limit increases in spending in these funds as we try to accumulate additional fund balance for those either pool repairs or pool replacements in the future.
So will we still have enough money left in that fund to pay for pool replacements?
No, we don't today. To be clear, again, this was a longer term strategy to accumulate funding such that in the future we'd have more flexibility for, so I, I don't want to make this like a false choice that today we have enough sufficient funding for that, that, those pool repairs. This is, I think somebody used the reference of a savings account. It, this is as if, you know, we know we have a new car on the horizon and so we're starting to put some additional money in the savings account so that when that day comes, we have a little bit more readiness for that. So that, that, I think that was the reference to trying to preserve fund balance in this fund is, is so that over time we could build some balances that could be used for that purpose.
But in that case, I mean, number three, why wouldn't we try to recover some of that through? I would hope we're still going to try to recover some through grants.
The, the challenge is, again, we, the bids now are expiring. And once we pay for the exhibits, I think the, the likelihood of a grant reimbursing us for expenditures we have already made is unlikely. We could certainly try that. Number three really says, what, what number three was, just as a reminder, we probably should have come back through the presentation that was given previously. Number three was there are two different things in the museum. The museum was being improved. The building itself was being improved. Some of the rooms were being enhanced. And so a good bit of the budget was actually facility improvements in the building. Five, about 500,000 of it was exhibits to be put into the building. So your prior presentation identified that most of the grant funding that's available is for exhibits. Number three would have made the building improvements that had been identified. There's some external improvements, some landscaping, kind of a garden, so you could have an indoor, outdoor space. Number three would allow those facility improvements to happen, but it wouldn't actually buy and install the exhibits. So you could have, again, the exhibits that we have already that were in the other exhibit, the other museum could come into that improved space. But you saw renderings of some exhibits that have been designed. Those are about 500,000. So number three was just sort of saying we're going to hold on the exhibits. We'll see if we can get grants or other kinds of things and maybe revisit ways to add additional exhibits over time. So, so that really, number, number one was really just we made some improvements, restore the building, put the exhibits that were there back. Number two was to do the whole project that was envisioned, all of the facility improvements, all the landscape improvements, all the exhibit improvements. Number three was the facility and grounds improvements, not the
So I just want to make sure again that I'm understanding. So this is a way different presentation than what I interpreted it before. But number three would be to spend 500,000 less than what number two is. Putting roughly almost 2 million back into Park's budget?
Number three would take the entire budget plus 500,000. So it'd be 2.3
Another half a million on top.
Another half million.
I think I'm overthinking it now. Okay, Roberta?
In the future budget, do we have like the allocation of the FTE required to run this building as well and the upkeep and the maintenance of the exhibits?
We don't in '26, because '26 was anticipated.
We don't need to be in '27.
Would be in '27.
All right. So the consensus I've heard is to move forward with the full project. I mean, I would think that part of you doing your job, because you guys do this incredibly, would be to also look at opportunities for grants. But the, this is still a priority for the council from what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you very much. You're out, Tony?
Mayor, if you'll excuse me for the evening.
Right. Draft strategic plan.
Okay, so you did some speed dating a few weeks ago and got a taste. We're going to go in greater detail through current recommendation for strategic plan. Our hope is that the city council will give final feedback and that this would come back for formal adaption by the council if it meets your needs in October.
So Taz just covered our agenda. I'll just provide a quick intro and then hand it over to our strategic focus area leads. So as a reminder, this effort began in January at your retreat up in Fort Collins. And today we're reviewing a draft plan. I really appreciate councils, we've, I won't go through these. We've highlighted all the different touchpoints with council over the past nine months. Really appreciate your feedback and consideration through all the different phases of the plan. As a reminder, the plan is structured around four strategic focus areas that we'll go into in depth. Tonight, we're going to review the goals and then the actions that are supportive of those goals. We're going to start off with Adam, followed by Brett and Chief Kelly and Erica. Just want to recognize their leadership in this effort. They've really been the the engine behind developing what you've seen. And there were a lot of employees that put a lot of effort into supporting the plan that we're happy to present to you all today. So just thanks to the group for, to their leadership. And I know they're going to recognize their folks as they go through. So further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Cooper to cover our first strategic focus area.
Yeah, thanks Rob, and good evening, council. I do want to start by recognizing the great work of the Vibrant and Purposeful Development Team. Every, every group will have a slide like this showing the, the participants of their group. Dedicated and passionate folks that spend three, three and a half hours every other week figuring through these topics and, and coming up with the information you're going to see tonight. So really appreciate all their work. I do want to recognize, we do have a couple of those folks in the room tonight. Ty Robbins in the back, I saw you raise your hand, there he is. Jason O'Shea was here, he is in the back. So, but thanks to the entire team for all their, all their great work on, on putting this information together. Uh, we're going to follow, all of us will follow a similar format as this tonight. We, we do have the Vibrant and Purposeful Development Strategic Focus Area, you guys have seen, I won't, I won't read it. But we did want to put together some outcome measures. And these are really meant to be broad metrics on each of the strategic focus areas to be tracked over time. Then the idea is that each of the work groups and the action items that, that are, that are in here will have their own detailed measures. So for Vibrant and Purposeful Development, some of the outcome measures that we thought aligned closely with our various goals were, I won't, I won't dig too far into these as you want, but community survey, survey questions, we thought we'd have two. One regarding the balance of land uses, satisfaction with those, and then the other one being availability and accessibility of parks, open space and cultural amenities. Those would be community survey questions. Now, we thought we would track the jobs to housing ratio, the housing cost, how much of your income is being spent on housing, and then trust for public and land park score. If you don't know what that is, that is basically a percentage of your population that lives within a 10 minute walk to a park. So those are the outcome measures we thought for Vibrant and Purposeful Development. It's a pretty broad category, including a lot of things that we thought felt fit. We're certainly looking for thoughts or feedback on that tonight if you have any.
Any thoughts on this one? Do you want to keep going and then come back? Your question on this one, go ahead, I'll come here.
So about the community survey. I noticed a lot of these slides have mentioned, is this one community survey for all of these? Are we doing a bunch of
No, I, I can take that question. So the city has had a longstanding practice to do a statistically significant citizen satisfaction survey. And that's generally happened on a piece of about every other year. I think we've, with the city manager transition, I think that got a little interrupted. The plan is, and I think you, you'll see on your meeting outlook, actually imminently, we'll be coming back to you to talk about the next citizen satisfaction survey. So if the, all of these questions would be addressed through that statistically significant survey, sampled in similar ways and collected at the same time.
Okay. And then the other metrics and, and the measures are jobs to housing ratio, housing cost burden. Where, what are the data sources for that? Are they already available to the city? Or do we have to look at a new way of collecting that data?
For, for the most part, all of the outcome measures are things that are readily available. There are a couple that we would still need to develop. And the thought is that we would track them on an annual basis at a minimum. The community survey questions generally are done in every other year's surveys. So the survey questions would maybe be every other year, unless we turn every year. The idea that we'd be updating these and kind of looking for trends on the annual basis.
And let me look at not just these ones here, but all the ones that list, listed in this presentation. Was there, has there been any discussion on how to determine the acceptable ranges of these values? Like, you know, when, what is a, an alarm, like of jobs to housing ratio? And how would we determine those boundaries and that variance of that as we measure over the years?
I think that's something that we'll have to think about. Some of these have set kind of goals, like that jobs to housing ratio, I think we have a standard goal that we do for. The trust for public land, that's not our metric, but they have a metric that they use. Others, we don't have that to work against. So I think that as we report out on these, that can be a further development to either, whether it's a benchmark of this is where we want to be, or to your point, hey, we've seen this number fluctuate, you know, X percent. We, we think that's beyond the statistical error and something that we, we think we should pay attention to. And I will say the questions were something that our, our survey firm helped develop. So they weren't, they, they were developed by professionals who do this for a living and, and in fact, actually had some of these stock questions already, you know, in the queue, so.
Well, I would just suggest next time you call me and you talk specifically about this item that you discuss looking at more data points annually, especially if you're trying to determine indicators of concern. Annual period, it could be it could be very challenging to pick up patterns. Or it would be too late.
We can go to the next one.
So I'm going to run through each of our goals and then the intent of the actions. I won't read through all of the actions. But do you want to start with?
Um, but, uh, do you want to start with, uh, uh, our first goal, which is enhance Thornton's identity by building on existing assets, revitalizing areas in decline, and attracting new opportunities? Um, uh, the, the actions underneath it are all reorganized based on, uh, the speed dating, as Tanzi referenced it. Uh, that we had in the dot exercise and the feedback we got from council on that. Um, we heard from, uh, both our internal team talked a lot about, um. Thornton's identity branding, we heard, we've heard from council, and we've heard from residents over the years that Thornton does lack a strong identity, and so. He tended his goals to help establish an identity through branding and revitalization. Uh, the goal received a pretty, pretty positive feedback during the speed dating session with council. Uh, it includes, uh, developing a redevelopment plan, planning for development of the city-owned property. Establishing districts in the city, recruiting more local businesses, and exploring options for a future downtown and other gathering spaces. So high level, that's really the intent of this. I want to stop kind of each, each goal and action list and hear thoughts, questions if you have.
Just one question about districts. You said identify new districts, do you mean like, uh, special? Tax districts or the, or do you mean like zoning districts?
No, actually, uh, we actually mean more like, uh, branding districts. So maybe we have like an entertainment district, or we have an artist district, or we have a local business district, and they might be spread throughout the city. So that was maybe the intent of the conversation that we had was, was more about, this entire goal is really about branding the city and, and identifying some of the things that we have as we creating. Uh, attracting new, uh, types of businesses for districts.
And then on the strategic redevelopment plan to identify infill sites. Does that kind of lead into the question of rezoning preemptively to. Publicly bring in, or is this part of a different strategic?
No, that would, that would, that would fit into that, as we look at sites that, um, do they fit in currently, as the zoning fit in with, with what the vision for that site could be? Do we need to look at rezoning to, to meet more of that vision, be more proactive in, in the redevelopment plan overall? I think it includes all.
That was two questions.
I know.
Be good. One question. Other questions on this one?
Yes.
Um, next one we have is, uh, plan for the future buildout of Thornton to include goals for annexation and growth. Targeted areas, industries for the city and fiscal impacts of land uses. Uh, we are a growing city, as everybody knows, um, the intent of this goal is to address and plan for the future build out of the city, of the city. Uh, in a sustainable and, um, responsible way. So, again, these are, these actions are organized by, uh, the dot exercise that we did. Um, with council and includes updating and educating on the stationary master plans. Planning for more corporate operations, uh, employment operations in the city. Updating our fiscal model and developer review processes and assessing the feasibility of Weld County. I will say on the last point, that was a divisive issue based on the dot exercise. We had four green dots on it and four red dots on it. So we, we did want to, we put it at the bottom of the list, but we did want to, um. Uh, have it on here for discussion if council wants to discuss it tonight. Uh, I will add one more thing to it, sorry. Um, we did give feedback, uh, at the event, uh, at the speed dating session that. Um, to be clear, this is just assessing the feasibility of Weld County, which, uh, not actually necessarily doing anything with it. Uh, we did give feedback, um, kind of the cost of doing that. We have, uh, we are exploring potential grants as a city to offset some of those costs, but. We don't have any ideas that we have yet. Those would be combined with comprehensive plan efforts and things like that, so. Just wanted to mention from a cost perspective, uh, factor that in as you're assessing, determining whether we want to assess it or not.
Chris?
I didn't get a chance to dock that one, so I'd be probably your missing dot. I can say red dot right now, given discussion on spending money and trying to expand in Weld County, given current plans for build out. So, as far as doing the study, that would be a red dot.
Okay, so five red dots, four green dots.
This probably is a place where we need to practically have a discussion, I think, if, um. If there's not interest in assessing, right now we have intergovernmental agreements that say that we. Uh, plan to grow into Weld County, and we do have imminent development proposals coming. To request annexation, so some of this was trying to get in anticipation of that to determine if we in fact. Do you want to accept growth into Weld County, or if we don't? If, if the city is not interested in entertaining growth into Weld County. We probably need to have a stronger discussion about existing intergovernmental agreements and how to modify those. Because in the current state of things, we are, uh, our, our long-term plans. Sort of encourage and invite individuals to, um. Make pre-investments and ask this, and, and request that the city consider annexation, because that's what our long-term growth. Documents state, and so, um. Probably one way or another, we can, we can certainly remove this from the strategic plan. But I, I do think imminently, if we're moving in a different direction, then likely we need to make some change, changes to our planning documents. Um, that. Make a signal to the market that, that, that the city is not, uh, planning to grow into Weld County. I don't know whether other cities or jurisdictions will, will pick up. Um, providing services in those areas or not, but do you think it, it, it's something that we can schedule for a future discussion?
Justin and Karen.
One question.
Okay, Karen?
Um, I would be another red dot, and I am not in favor of that. But I'd like to get out of the strategic plan for now.
I think you already were a red dot. I think you already were included in the red dot.
I wasn't, because I didn't, we didn't do, Chris and I didn't do red dots.
There's a chance that people put multiple dots.
There is that. I mean, I think it makes sense to take it out of the strategic plan, but I do think there needs to be a strategic conversation with the council on that, because of the potential imminent. Asking to annex into that county. There are pros and cons to it that we should probably all be up to speed on.
Yeah, we, we'll remove it from the plan, but we will also schedule a future planning session, just so that. Uh, everybody is aware of both the current agreements in that area. And some of the thing, um, frankly, I think we've already had communication and pre-application. Um, individuals, um. Intending to go through the development process, so we'll, we'll do a future work session on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. Other questions on this goal? Great. Uh, next goal is to further evaluate housing products and city processes to provide an attractive, attractive mix of residential product types. Um, the intent of this goal is probably pretty self-explanatory, is set the city up for success in providing diverse housing choices throughout the community. Uh, I'll point out, two of the three actions are really more about education and community engagement, so the first bullet and the third bullet. Really are more about, um, proactive communication and engagement. And then the other action, which is the middle bullet, is really about, uh, an expedited process, uh, for these. Questions or thoughts on this goal?
Justin? I guess on this one, I, the only thing that really bothers me that has happened in the past is when we do. Uh, ask for diverse housing or mixed use, or bring in some retail component, and then they say they're going to. A lot of times it doesn't happen, or we're still waiting for it to happen. And so, I, I think just develop, including in that, making sure, like, holding them accountable. If we're gonna ask for the adverse housing products and create this mixed residential. They have to be held accountable for putting those other pieces in. Because a hundred and fourth in steel, nothing. We were promised that section would be something. Retail, it's not. And I thought that was a part of that plan as they built, and it doesn't look like it, because that plot is up for sale again, I believe. So it's just frustrating when they, developers come in and say, yeah, that sounds good, we're gonna do this and this and this. And then it doesn't happen. And I know that they say they need houses before, but. Kind of frustrating when it doesn't.
Okay, that's good feedback.
General comment.
It's just a comment, it's just a comment to add on to that, because it's something that's irritating that seems to happen more often than I would like to have seen it over the last eight years.
Good feedback, thank you. Um, other comments on this goal?
I guess not.
Great. Two more for us, and then we'll move on. Uh, uh, identify opportunities in development review process to encourage developers to include amenities such as more public plazas, art, or improved landscaping and infrastructure. Um, the intent of this goal is really to identify opportunities to partner with private sector to develop the types of amenities and public spaces. We'd like to see, um, and so, could include things like. A reduction in fees or timelines if they're, if they're committing to including these public spaces. Um, and then making the process easier to include art or attractive infrastructure. Uh, that's really the intent of this goal, is to try to, uh, work with the private sector and make it easier to build the types of things we want. I will stop talking now and.
Jessica, well, I, I'm just looking at this one and the next one. Um, and, and I'm just curious, like, as we talk about more walkable communities, could part of that also be? They have to include or connect to any trail or create one if there doesn't have any. Because, uh, as we talk about walkability. It's not walkable if you can only walk out of that development and then you can't go anywhere else. So, I, you know, there are areas that you see could be connected. At, you know, maybe that's a part of that development. I don't know what that looks like, and I know that every time we add another component, and I know the next item is. Creating a framework for future parks, open spaces, but. Somehow, if we're gonna be walkable, then it has to actually be walkable. It can't be sidewalk and then. No sidewalk, and then dirt, and then partial sidewalk, and then curb that's cut out, so you could ride your bike continuously, and then no curb, and then you have to stop and get off. It's just very disjointed, and so as I'm looking at these two, is that a part of that somehow?
I do think there's a, um, action, and when we get to connected communities, that speaks to that more directly, that Brett can highlight when we get to that. Part of the plan.
Chris?
Is there any way to tighten up the in lieu of, when, now using example, because this happened in the last few months. But they had a requirement, they had a meeting in lieu of doing that requirement, they went the route of, well, like a dog park, park benches. But then the developer wraps that into the metro district. So they essentially were able to sidestep it, didn't have to meet the agreement requirements. And they really weren't out of pocket for those additional amenities, they put it into the metro district, and then the residents are paying for those. So however, we can tighten that up if that is possible, that would be something that I think that would be advantageous to our residents, because metro districts already. Are financially burdensome, so I just don't want them passing the buck, basically. If you agree to these things, then you have to agree to these things, but please don't turn it into metro district expense. And then you get off basically without that, so. That would be something I'd be interested in seeing some options if we could. I don't know how easy that is done, but that is a complaint for a critical chase in development.
Yeah, and I think that kind of fits into, um, maybe that top bullet there, um, and, and actually, you, you mentioned that before, we put it as a kind of a sub-bullet on. On this piece of, or during the implementation stage, how do we make sure that? If we're gonna do something that is a potential tool, it's not kind of getting, passing the buck on through to another operation, so. Uh, we could jot that down from your, your, your comment before, and I'm like, about again, so we can make sure that we. Incorporated in as we pass these on to maybe the different work groups, does that, does that make sense?
Right, yeah, just, you know, however you guys could explore it, I think that would be something for us that would benefit the restaurants.
Very good. Other thoughts on this goal? Alright. And then the final goal that we have here is, um, create a framework for future parks, open spaces, and public facilities and trail construction to enhance all types of development. Ten of this goal is to continue, continue to work to align our future growth planning with parks, open spaces, facilities, and trails. Similar to our growth goal number two there that you saw, um, we're a growing city, we want to make sure that we're being proactive in how we plan these operations, so. Component of this is gaps in trail connections, um, uh, how do we, there, there are locations in the city where we have undeveloped sites. Uh, that are, those sites are, are stopping a trail from connecting throughout, uh, large parts of the city, so are there ways to be proactive in. Working with those property owners to make those connections, so that that trail is complete. Um, aligning the parks master plan and the comprehensive plan, then future planning for facilities, trails. Et cetera, and again, just being proactive, as we know we are growing, um, how can you best plan for that? Some of this work is, is happening through the parks department, but to continue, continue to do that long-term as we grow. I will stop now and open it up for questions.
Questions on this one?
I have a question on the week.
That we already passed, go for it.
Last one.
This one?
She's back to the one for the future buildout. And, um, you've got an item on here, uh, review the city's comprehensive plan and stationary master plans. To include modernizing the vision, opportunities for increased density in strong communities. Specifically on the stamp plans, my, my question is about the, how quickly we would be able to do that? Because I know that there's already two active applications in our existing stamp plan, we really only have three nations to work with. So, how relevant would this be if we're already kind of, I almost feels like we missed the, missed the train on this one.
No plan intended?
Yeah.
Missed the train, but. Uh, I think that we do, we do see, um, the need to, uh, maybe modernize the vision some. How quickly? That's a good question, and I don't, I don't have an answer for you now in regard to that, but I think what we're trying to do here is. Um, uh, where there's opportunities to educate and, and add some, some ability for increased density, try to explore those. Proactively, you know, even, even, even during the process of, of reviewing an application. Um, and so it might, it might dovetail with some that are, that are moving, but the, the idea here is. Um, trying to be more proactive on, on that work, where we have opportunities to do that. Your question is certainly well noted. Um, but we're trying to get ahead of it where we can, so.
Yeah, just a reminder, on timeline generally, we would say that the time horizons for the strategic plan is. Generally kind of in that three to five year timeframe to try to complete all of these. I think our intent is, once the council adopts this, we get action plans to come back with, to you with sort of a clear. Um, implementation plan that shows you the time horizons that these things will unfold. In the case of stationary and master plans, we don't have current funding to support consultants, like, we do have some grant. Applications out to try to bring in grant funding, so if we were able to get grant funding for this, that, that, those, that effort might move more quickly. Than if we had to, uh, recommend future, uh, funding and a future budget. So as in a good example, some of these will, as we get into action planning, we'll, we'll come back with better refined timelines.
So moving into the next strategic focus area, it's connected communities, uh, similar to the format you just saw, will fall the same one for this one and the subsequent two other ones. Um, again, similarly, Adam, I want to recognize the folks that were on this group. I think Adam even commented that this was a finer collection of individuals that he had on his team. Um, so connected communities, again, I'm not gonna read this all, but I want to focus on the outcome measures. Um, since we are focusing on traffic congestion and enhancing safety for multimodal options. Um, community survey questions, there were two that we were considering, how safe do you feel when walking, biking, or driving through Thornton? And then how satisfied are you with the reliability and timeliness of traveling across Thornton using different modes of transportation? Uh, so those would be our community survey questions. We already tracked the next one, um, K S I, killed or seriously injured accidents per one thousand, and so again, that's a good measure, it's a. Um, obviously not a great statistic that we, um, necessarily want to focus on, but it's a very important statistic, and we want to actually get those to zero, that's the whole point of the Vision Zero program. Um, additionally, the, uh, trail and bike lane mile for one thousand, again, we've been tracking this for quite some time and adding to our network, but. To show progress there, we can look at that over time. And then, um, we're still working on this one a little bit, the last one, transit coverage. Um, we were looking at potential ridership-ish, uh, ridership percentages and numbers, but sometimes those can fluctuate for reasons outside our control, but we're trying to somehow capture. Um, a transit, uh, related metric there as well over time. So we have three goals within, uh, connected communities. The, the first one really focuses on the safety aspect of it. Already mentioned Vision Zero a little bit. Um, every, every council member, I think, on, through the exercises, speed dating exercise has been called, had dots on all these actions, actually, most of them had three to four dots, so I. Every council member, I think on through the exercise, the speed dating exercise has been called, had dots on all these actions. Actually, most of them had three to four dots. So I know it was very popular across. All the different action items. Vision zero will continue to be implemented. There's a lot of effort behind that, but really we want to be able to focus on the communications and the pursuit of grant opportunities. Grants are very ripe within the sector. And so we'll be heavily pursuing that as far as our actions. There were a lot of dots during the exercise as well that council put on as far as operational improvements that address congestion, both congestion and safety. And so there's things too that we want to. We kind of take it off if you want to say the lowest hanging fruit on some of those things, but we want to be able to get to that next level and further enhance those projects. Cross departmental review to prioritize pedestrian and bicycle opportunities was another one that was heavily highlighted. There was a specific note and mention of a trail, creating a safe trail connection on Holly Street, kind of near 118th Avenue that will. Be passed along to the actual teams that are implementing this. That one leans certainly more towards, towards a specific CIP. And so we'll also keep it in mind as we approach and go through budget season for prioritization. Comments or questions on this one before I go to the next goal?
Chris?
Well, just make the back one. The questions, this is something that I brought up because it wasn't until I was on council that I even knew about the trail map. So when you do the survey questions. For residents, do you know or even aware of the various modes of transit? I didn't, I didn't know we were fully connected. I know you ride your bike all the way from Denver here, but. I think there's probably a lot of residents that don't even know what's available at an option area and if you can get across the city. So by default, drive.
So question more about awareness.
Awareness and how do we get that information more partly broadcasted to the, yeah, at the time I had it to your 15 years. You didn't even know we had a trail map. I was online.
Well, we'll have to look, we certainly can do that. We'll have to look back. The consultant gave us, you know, half dozen questions for each one of these areas. There may already be something in there. If not, I'm sure we can develop something that could speak to it.
What else?
Second goal is all about movement. We want to be reliable, easy and accessible. This one involves multiple departments to implement. Several council members, I think also learning how, so again, the system started to put their dots on the entire goal versus selecting specific action items, but it did signal that again, this. This particular item was very important as far as implementing everything that was described below it, except for we did receive one red dot, which I'll touch here in a second. As far as the action items, there was a lot of highlight given to. Working on basically real time incident notification that action items on there and our abilities to also then notify and adjust, notify the public and adjust our signal timing. So that's one that will be. Prioritized. Relating back to council member Sangrin's comment from earlier, there, we do have on here, develop a plan to provide easier multimodal. Connections to key destinations and regional trails. I think it'll be a combination of what you're talking about because certainly there's an opportunity when a new development is coming in, but through that as well. We can't always require them, you know, connect this trail a couple of miles down. There might be the potential then for the city to. Install or budget and then install projects that then take advantage of the development that's going in. And so. I think it'll be a combination of the two strategic focus areas to kind of implement what you're talking about. And then as far as the red dot and customer Martinez, this will kind of relate to the conversation about the stamp plans and how we, have we already somewhat missed it? The red dot was on the last one. And so we did adjust where the priorities were on the slide, but it's a determinative strategy to preserve land for future mobility hubs, transit stations and key trail connections. From what I recall from the red dot concern being is that we don't always guess right when we do this. So we didn't want necessarily tie up funding, trying to buy land for these things. So we did revise this a little bit to say we're determining the strategy preserve that we may not be buying the land actually and locking up funds, but there may be other ways that we can. Somewhat reserve the land for these different connections or for the. Mobility hubs or anything else. Yeah. Any other questions or any questions on this goal? I can always come back. So the last goal, this is all about basically the connections being enjoyable themselves and trying to bring people together. This primarily will hit our parks and recreation department. If you recall the old Soderbergh saying department of fun, this is kind of how I think of this as well. So we have, you know, we built these infrastructure options, but let's make sure they're enjoyable and used. Used well. And so there was a lot of enthusiasm around the action items, support multimodal transportation and a major city events. I think somebody made the comment about like any large city event, let's make sure we're really trying to push this. And so. We'll be strategizing basically how we can implement that at future events. And then all the other actions within this category received at least one dot as well. So again, there was broad support for everything that was being listed in here. Trail mapping was brought up by council member Russell. There's ways to kind of improve that relations of wayfinding and other things. So all about the accessibility and usability of the trails and making it. An enjoyable experience when, when people are on it. But questions within this goal? Turn it over to the third best team now.
I'll be presenting the strategic focus area that I was responsible for. That was a safe support level with communities like the other groups. I, I'll highlight just the. The cross departmental collaboration. You can see from the team, it was broadly representing multiple city departments, a number of which are here in the room tonight. And spend quite the process to get here today. So what I'll do is I'll just cover the outcome measures for safe support and level of communities. There are three. Community survey questions really focusing on access to recreation programs, facilities and events. Question regarding how feeling of safety. And also a question regarding the reliability, quality and. Reliable and quality of Florence water. Also two other metrics, part one crimes for police measure and then emergency incidents per thousand for a fire department measure. Questions about the outcome measures? All right, this first goal, this is foster an engaged and informed community to increase awareness of program services and resources to build. Community pride and ownership. And really this, the theme of this goal is speaking to a well-informed, well-prepared community. Informed on safety services, informed on emergency management notifications, really trying to build a resilient community. Also these actions speak to having a very engaged and participative community that we're engaging. Volunteer opportunities and resources really for the community to support neighbors as well. And that's the, the drive of both of these two action items. From a, I think I'll, I don't think we received a single red dot in safe and supportive level of communities. These, all these actions were prioritized or organized based on the number of. Frequency of the green dots in the exercise. Questions on this goal? This next goal is to cultivate a welcoming, inclusive and thriving city of Thornton where all residents have access to diverse resources that meet their individual needs. Improve their quality of life and foster a strong sense of belonging. The general themes of all of these action items cover housing security, food security, a focus on accessibility to recreational program. Access to social services, resources, including both things along the lines of mental health resources, substance resources. Initiatives to address homelessness. Again, going back to creating this inclusive and welcoming community. And these are the four actions that. Next goal. This is, this goal is really. Public safety focused more than the other three goals, but this is build trust and improve both real and perceived community security and safety to effectively serve every neighborhood in the city of Thor. The, the general themes in this goal, highly trained public safety personnel that were, our public safety resources are adapting to changing community needs. We're building community trust. We're enhancing the perception of public safety services. We're utilizing innovative technology. We're leaning into technology and that we're very responsive to. Both the, the community as a whole and vulnerable populations in the city. And these five action items. And this is the fourth goal, the final goal. This one speaks directly to utility, utilities and infrastructure. So this is provide the community with a efficient, resilient and sustainable utility and public work system that positions us to adapt to evolving needs. And I'll say really in a, in a very general level or a high level, this is speaking to our success and what we're leaving for future generations. Are we building? A sustainable city that meets not just our current needs, but, but future needs that we're responsible, we're efficient. With our use of very limited resources, we're providing water security, energy, energy, security. And accessibility resources for everyone in the community. And these, these four goals are very much tied back to, these four actions are tied back to that goal.
Okay. And I, I think what Brett was trying to communicate earlier was that the farther we go into the presentation, the better the teams get. So. We'll be closing out the night with organizational excellence. So.
A bunch. Never knew it.
Have a lot of team pride. So anyways, as they, as. My team members here have mentioned, we had a very enthusiastic, excited bunch, a really passionate group that. Works diligently to create these different goals and action items. And as Chief Kelly mentioned, we really got a cross cut of the entire organization. We had. Individuals from almost every single department within the city. And some members of that team are here tonight, Gary Hobs and Todd Barnes. Okay, so I'm speaking to organizational excellence tonight. And some of the outcome measures that we've landed on. So there are two community survey questions, including. How satisfied are you with the customer service you receive when interacting with city staff? And then how satisfied are you with the city's communication about important initiatives, services and decisions? We also have a couple of outcome measures that are tracked more internally. One is related to employee survey results. So it's, it's sort of similar to what the external survey would be looking at. It's just internal focus. To see how employees are feeling. And then the turnover rate, which also speaks to something similar. We also, we would like to measure, have a measure related to financial health or financial sustainability. We haven't landed on one quite yet. Any questions or comments on this?
We currently do not have an employee survey. Is that right?
Not regularly. We, we did one with the organizational review study and the idea was that that would be. Kind of the start of a foundation. We could use some of those questions, use the kind of that outcome to. To develop a more regular type of employee survey process. We've not historically done a internal survey, employee survey on regular.
There been any discussions on how frequently the survey would be conducted?
We haven't discussed that. I mean, ultimately, right now we do the. Citizen satisfaction survey every other year. So it might be one of those things that we could do those in interviewing years. So one year could be. Citizen satisfaction, the next year employee satisfaction. There is a little bit when you do the. Lots of cities do that citizen satisfaction every other year because it gives time to put in place programs and strategies. And then measure whether, whether or not those have been effective. So, but yeah, we haven't. We haven't even figured that the employee survey that we did was quite long. So we, we haven't even figured out which questions we might use as a benchmarks. For that baseline going forward.
Yeah, I recommend considering doing. Minimum once a year. An employee survey is much smaller scale than a community.
Are those anonymous? There's no way to track back?
Yes, the, the block line survey wasn't on, was it on the survey and going forward it would be anonymous.
Okay, so the first goal within organizational excellence was. Prioritize and cultivate a culture of exemplary customer service, collaboration, belonging and recognition. This is really, to me, this is like the, the foundation of what organizational excellence is. And this is something that. The team was really passionate about that if we don't have good customer service, both. Internally and externally facing to all of our different clients, whether that's a resident, a business. A visitor to, to the community, like we really don't have anything. And so that is, that is what all of these three action items are trying to achieve. So the first one is really a customer service strategy. The second action item is related to an employee engagement strategy. So it's sort of like the flip side of an external facing, it's internal facing. And then lastly, opportunities for cross departmental committees and work plans. This is something that. Employees at large have expressed interest in and we think that just like cross departmental work just helps the city run better as well. Any comments or questions on this goal? The next goal was to foster a practice of recruiting, developing, equipping and retaining an effective and professional workforce. So really tying back to that first goal of providing exemplary customer service. We are better able to do that if we hire, develop and retain the best employees. And so to further that goal, there are the three action items, which includes streamlining hiring, eliminating barriers and defining clear career ladders. Creating more interest just generally in careers within local government to, to hopefully drive sort of a pipeline for more applicants to come to us. And then lastly, developing a training plan for supervisors to support employee development within the city. Thoughts or questions on this goal? The third goal is bolster data-driven decision-making and technology integration to improve organizational effectiveness. Really, the idea behind this is that, and we've certainly seen council express interest in it. Having more data allows for. Better decision-making, better conversation around policy questions. And so that's really the intent of this. So. To that end, the four different action items, we've included our explorer feasibility to leverage AI. Conducting a citywide audit of existing software systems. The purpose of that would really be to streamline and to provide for some efficiencies. Across the organization, developing a performance measurement program. And then lastly, making sure that any of our organizational plans and processes. Really line up with our adopted mission, vision, value and strategic plan.
Just a quick question and comment on this one. I know we've looked at different software upgrades over the years and they're pretty expensive. I think it's hard to understand from our perspective sometimes. What we get the, the cost and what that is, you know, if we spend it or we don't spend it. But I think sometimes what isn't necessarily clear is how it impacts staff. Efficiencies if we don't purchase it, even if it is expensive. So as we move forward with new technology and more staff and more responsibilities. But then don't purchase or keep up with the technology that would help them. Is it a trade off that we have? Spend the money and so we don't have that. So we are still using an old system, but that means staff can't do their day-to-day job as, as they could if we had it or. Like what's the trade off? So I guess if that was more a part of that conversation, not just to spend, but what the actual trade offs are. That might be helpful because I know that there's a lot in here about streamlining and efficiencies, but. You know, cost is also a factor, but if we don't upgrade, what's the trade off?
Thank you. The second to last goal is align financial planning with long-term asset resource and service needs in a sustainable way. And to that end, we have these five separate action items, including developing a comprehensive plan. To model deferred maintenance and replacement costs. Periodically reviewing current new or expanded potential expansion of revenue streams. Developing a list of services provided by each department describing performance. Um, developing a list of services provided by each department describing performance measurement data ties to the strategic plan and net cost. Um, the thought behind that one is really just to say, you know, if we are able to provide more data to you all on sort of like a comprehensive list of services, provided, we're more, you, you are more able to then say like, yes, like let's bolster this area or, you know, this area is not as utilized. Um, explore feasibility of an incentive and recognition program for employee submitted ideas. And then lastly, developing a strategy to, uh, create, um, more understandable and easy to access financial data.
On the first bullet, are you, is that about like, uh, recreation, city buildings? Um, okay, so I guess for that one, I, I do have concerns about that. And I don't know how this is going to come forward in the future, but, when I think about this building in general and, and this whole complex here, we know that the council chambers is in need of upgrade. We know that, um, even just the building itself is old and is going to need either major improvements or, uh, maintenance upgrades. But we also have Carpenter Rec Center, and those are all long-term, very expensive capital projects and maintenance plan. What, how far in advance would the, you know, best time to be looking like? Do we wait until it's really in trouble, like the community center? Or do we start now talking about Margaret Carpenter, thirty years old? Here's what we think the next ten years is going to look like if we don't do something. Or this building, or when will we do the upgrades to the council? I mean, those are all big, high-dollar ticket items and they all happen at once. The water, uh, pipelines that we know are also infrastructure. It just seems like there's a lot of, now that we're seventy years old, how soon do you start telling council to put that on the radar for budgeting purposes, I guess?
Well, I mean, how I was envisioning it, and it's not for sure how it will be developed. Would be that, you know, for example, the building, building maintenance capital plan. We have a, we have a five-year capital plan that is provided to council at each budget cycle. And so what I would envision is at minimum, we would provide a five-year outlook to council of here's what the next five years would look like. For all of these different, um, facilities and, you know, large.
Uh, one of the things here too is, again, these are meant to be visionary, but it give room for the action teams to innovate here. So to do benchmarking, see what other people are doing and how they are thinking long-term, but also with some level of accuracy. And so I think one of the first steps, I think, you know, we'll talk more about implementation over time. Each one of these actions, we intend to have a planning team working on it. And so they'll have the opportunity. This is just their jumping off point to build more specific, more detailed aspirations to, to further inform that. So I think to summary, we don't want to limit the thinking or the innovation for the individuals that end up, taking, you know, kind of the batons here to figure out, you know, what, what's the most, what's the most optimal innovative way to approach each of these actions?
I guess I'm just thinking of it in terms of, you know, I'm at the end of my two terms and I can't really recall, having a conversation where we were saying, other than we know this needs to be upgraded or that does, but never really, you know, showing the, priority or, um, maintenance of if we don't do this in, or plan for this, then we might be in the same situation that we were with this. And so I'm just thinking, I, I obviously will not be here for any of this. But as the next group comes in, I, I can't recall ever having that. And those are things that are going to become more prevalent moving forward.
They're all good points and that's kind of what this first point is trying to address, correct? You're trying to give us a, a more comprehensive schedule in advance. I've only been here two years, but it seems like we get that window briefly before budget season. And then it's just the one you're looking at essentially. Um, so I, I do think that's be very valuable to have. Those are those trade-offs and looking further down. So that's a good.
Um, so our last goal and also the goal with our single red dot was, um, optimize communication and engagement, across the organization, community and regional partners. Um, so this one really ties back to developing that plan to strengthen and streamline, uh, the city's internal and the external commu- communication, but with really prioritizing reaching, uh, community members who maybe we've missed in the past. So making sure we're, we're meeting those gaps where they are, finding them and then meeting them. Um, revisiting that citywide stakeholder survey. Just to make sure that we're, we're like squeezing all the information out of it that we can and utilizing it appropriately. Um, and then lastly, explore current and potential regional participation efforts. And this was the one that, um, we did get the lone red dot along with some, uh, green dots as well. So, um, just wanted to point that out if council had any additional comments on that one.
Uh, you made it to the end. Um, uh, there was a, a lot of us yapping at you. Thank you for the feedback. Um, wanted to talk a little bit about what's next. We tentatively scheduled, um, adoption of a strategic plan on the fourteenth of October. A little presumptuous, we hadn't gone through this yet, um, but I'll come back to that. Um, Tanzi mentioned a couple of slides ago and we mentioned earlier, the, this idea of strategic, um, plan implementation teams. Our intent, now we can't do this until we have a final plan, but our intent is to form, reach one of these actions, implementation teams. Those would be cross-departmental, action-oriented teams, really the driving force behind these actions. Bringing these actions that are, as Tanzi said, so, still somewhat visionary at this point into life with specific, uh, work plans, milestones, uh, measures, budgets, those kind of things that will, um, identify a specific path forward and allow us to track our progress and hold ourselves accountable for, um, uh, for progress on the plan. Are, we also envision those, um, those teams, again, one per action, plan to report out to, um, what we're calling strategic plan advisory teams. So those are, um, uh, not members of the implementation team, but are there to make sure that the intent is met of council to ensure that they're on track, to help identify roadblocks, maybe remove those, make connections, um, where we need to make connections to achieve the desired outcome of the plan. Um, and then we wanted to talk about, um, your all's role in, in this plan again, assuming we can adopt it. Um, we were envisioning, and, uh, this is obviously, uh, open to discussion for y'all. Um, we were envisioning at minimum twice per year progress report. So to kind of get an update, uh, high level on, uh, on what we're doing, uh, on these plans. Eventually, we'd like to build out a dashboard that can provide more robust reporting. We're not going to be there, uh, initially, but, um, that'd be the ultimate goal. Obviously, we'd like to use the, the council retreat as a checkpoint, um, you, you know, depending on where we are in the cycle, either an opportunity to, talk about progress, celebrate success, or maybe reassess some of the goals and actions. Um, and that is, we talked about during the budget, uh, discussion, using the plan, um, as a, as a foundational document, as we develop the budget, much more so, um, than we did in this year's budget. Um, again, since we will have, uh, hopefully an adopted strategic plan with implementation teams, we'll be able to tie those actions directly into, um, funding resources. So I'd be happy to, um, uh, talk a little bit more about the implementation and council touchpoints. But, um, at the end, we'd really like to get a sense from council on whether this is a plan you think you can support moving forward, noting the, the changes that we, um, we heard today.
Yes.
Yeah, just kind of a couple of, questions about the process that we went through and, um, you know, we, we did the exercise with the dots. And I understood it as a way to let you all know the priorities or what you want in and what we want. That don't necessarily want in there. So how, how did that factor into here? Because I, I, I saw some items on here that, that we had a bunch of red dots and some items at greens. So what, how did you rank things and what, what did you interpret the dots as? And, and what do we, how do we go from here on that? Because, uh, we did talk about a couple of issues where there were, um, you know, concerns about putting that into the strategic plan, like the issue of the expansion into Weld County. So what, what are the, how do you, how, how do we interpret that in going forward? And those action items that come out of this?
Yeah, I, I, if I could just take an initial stab and then let the group, um, chime in. We looked at the, the speed day, could the exercise and apologies, it was, it was crunch. I, I understand that. We also did an employee survey and kind of asked their priorities as well on the, on the, um, on the actions, a different version of that. So some of those things were dropped as well. I don't think we talked about that. But really, the, the prioritization exercise with council, um, a, as you know, we didn't take anything, I don't think we took anything off. And now the Weld County thing will come off, but we didn't take anything off. What we used it to do is prioritize and, and as, as folks mentioned, the bullets were in priority order. So the way I look at it is, unless directed otherwise, we intend to try to move all of those things forward. However, the things that are the highest priority will probably have the most aggressive implementation plan. That's what I would expect at least. If there are things that council doesn't want to see in this plan, like now's probably the time to have that discussion. Um, we noted the Weld County thing. I, I don't think there was anything else that we interpreted to be, yeah, I don't think we want to pursue this. But if there is something, then we probably ought to talk about that now and make sure that, again, this plan is something that you all can support. It's reflective of this body.
Yeah, I guess my question was just like, because there was no indication in this presentation, like what, what was really popular with, with us and what, what was it? So I just wanted to make sure that, those were being considered. It would be great for the follow-up on this to, to kind of, get an understanding. We didn't get a chance to go back and take a look at, uh, cumulative results of that exercise. So it would be good to, to see that and see how everybody else collectively, uh, ranked things. And, um, yeah.
We, we could do that. Um, I think we still have the records of how that and just reflect to you, how many green dots and how many red dots did, did different things. We could also show you or give some indication of what was the relative priority of that, of each of these initiatives in the employee survey. So, uh, uh, there are some interesting, um, tidbits, I think, I, I think the most, maybe the, um, most extreme where there might been outliers. There was an action about clear financial tools and reporting. And I think that was the lowest priority and you were not pulling it. It was one of the highest priorities of the employee survey. And so we could share both of those perspectives so that you could see sort of the, uh, relative priority, as identified through your exercise and how that compared to the feedback we got from employees.
Thank you.
Any objections to the plan presented? Everybody's good with it? We can support it? I really appreciate the amount of work that you all have put into this. It, it's not easy putting our thoughts down on paper and putting them into the words that we can agree to. So very much appreciate the effort taken to do that. I want to see it in October.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we'll have to take a quick break. All right. Thank you for allowing us to take a quick break. We will pass it over to the next group to talk about youth.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Mayor Potam Council. Uh, we're here tonight to talk about the, uh, Y-Rack, which is the Youth, um, Resource and Assessment Center. As you may or may not know or remember, uh, in twenty twenty-two, the link, kind of dissolved and it left a huge gap in, uh, mess, services that are really necessary in Adams County. And Thornton specifically is, we were one of the big, we were the biggest user of the link. Um, and there's just been this, this, uh, vacuum. Um, and now we've got, uh, Y-Rack. So tonight I have, uh, Becky Hoffman with, with me and she'll be doing some speaking tonight. Uh, Becky is the executive or the startup executive director of Y-Rack. And, uh, many of you probably recognize her. She's been a, uh, focal point of youth-related, uh, things in Adams County for a number of years. To my left, we have another familiar face and, uh, former, uh, chief Terrence Gordon, who currently serves as the board of the, uh, for Y-Rack.
Can we do a background check on him before we let him back?
I don't know. He walked right behind me on the employee entrance. We'll just start from there, I guess. So Becky.
Well, I also will share that, uh, Keith Evans is the vice chair and Terrence is the board chair. So thanks for being here tonight. Um, we prepared a presentation, there's something in your packet. Um, for the sake of time, I'm going to try to just provide the who we are, what we're doing, where we've been and where we're going. And if there's time for questions, um, we can do that, if that sounds good. So, um, quite frankly, we're going to, uh, date the data and marry the problem. Uh, violent juvenile crime rates in our community has been skyrocketing. And so the data is clear. Basically, kids are hurting and kids are hurting each other. And so a juvenile assessment center is really here to support, um, finding the right resource for the right kids at the right time, when there really is that warm handoff from your law enforcement or school districts. So it just brings that to life a little bit. Here's the stark reality of Adams County juvenile crime. Um, it is reported that Adams County has the highest juvenile crime rates in the state. However, on deeper review of that, we realize all of City of Aurora's data is reported in Adams County. So thanks to your crime analyst and our community partners, we're diving into this data and really looking at municipal level data. Um, am I going the wrong way? So the need, um, the Adams County Behavioral Health really is just talking about, the critical need is to increase universal screening, referral and integrated and behavioral health again in real time. And that's what your new Y-Rack is designed to do. But talking about where we had a juvenile assessment center in this community for about twenty-two years. And, um, since I've come on board and the work of the, the new board of directors, is that the new Y-Rack is really designed to break down silos. Um, a commitment to authentic family and youth engagement, but also that commitment to measuring our impact in real time. A commitment to continuous improvement. The one thing that we're also very committed to is follow up and follow through. So Thornton Police Department, um, has been the biggest user of your, the link in the past. But when we talked to Keith and the team, it's like they would make referrals to the link and then never really hear anything else. And so we have a strong commitment to continually come back to your SROs, our school district and our referral partners, to make sure that young people are getting and their families are getting support all the way through. Our unique approach is that we will be a coordinated, community-driven hub, um, really accessing and intervening early. But that customized support in real time and then being results-driven. Our stakeholder benefits is when we think about kids and family in our community, we really want to look at their home environment, their school environment and their c- community environment. And what we know right now, because there is a huge gap in the community, is that when law enforcement engages with a young person and they're not a fit for human services, your law enforcement is now forced to have the kids hang out in their car. Or where are they going right now, Keith? Down to urban?
A lot of them are going down to, you know, the hospice, sometimes the hospitals, which is a huge drain on the emergency departments as well. And it's not where they need to be because they're not getting the services that they really need.
Um, so just talked a little bit who we are. Um, this is our board. We talked about Terrence and Keith. We're also really proud to have, um, our two largest school districts, which you also serve the Director of Intervention from twenty-seven J and Lori Bailey from Adams twelve. And then we also have representation from the District Attorney's Office, the Department of Health, Adams County Sheriff's Office, Human Services and the Deputy Chief from the City of Brighton. So this is your current Board of Directors right now. We see them as our startup executive directors, really the content experts of our community. And then over time, we'll be transitioning to a more traditional nonprofit board. Um, our partners and stakeholders, um, excited that, um, all of the partners that were a part of the link, are committed to coming back with the exception of Broomfield, but we'll get them there. Um, and our timeline, so there was a, the link actually closed in twenty twenty-three, actually officially. I think they stopped providing services in twenty twenty-two. Um, there was a, a conversation in August twenty twenty-three, I believe, Terrence. Um, there was a a conversation in August twenty twenty-three, I believe, Terrence and District Attorney Brian Mason kicked off a community conversation. Just really fast forward last year in twenty twenty-four, the Board Incorporated is a five oh one C three. And where we are today is that we are tentatively planning on opening very soon with some key milestones um that we have in place. So going into this fiscal climate on the sunset of ARPA dollars and lessons learned from the link and also following the successful Ralston House model, we're being very thoughtful about our future revenue projections. So right off the bat, we've um our number one milestone for opening is securing a facility's host. Proud to report that twenty-seven J School District is providing um a one-year lease to us in Brighton. Um, we are finalizing the lease right now as we speak, and we've also received four hundred thousand dollars from the county commissioners um reallocated ARPA dollars for the architectural design and the tenant improvements. And that is happening right now. So that's exciting. Number two, we would like to secure a fiscal agent. We have a couple of proposals out to community partners that have shown interest in that. But really just wanting to make sure that this is a very community-driven um partnership this time, we'll be looking to look at how we can share some of the administrative costs around HR um uh fiscal revenue development, what have you. And there's some strong conversations happening with our community partnerships right now. And then number two, where you all come in, is formalizing our key partnerships. So have IGAs have been circulated, I believe, January of this year. We'll also like to have a formal um MOU contract with Department of Human Services. And then we will also have to have um a partnership with a youth homeless shelter. So data mapping is very much underway. Um, really understanding what our baseline data is, we can measure success in real time. Scan of referral pathways, had an opportunity to meet with Keith and his team and brought in Adams twelve, and we did what we call intervention mapping. So we started just really mapping what's happening for kids and families right now. And there's a mental health, there's weapon use, kind of the big things that are leading to violent juvenile crime. And that has really helped us inform what our strategies and our programs are going to go moving forward. I think the thing that I'm excited about is looking towards the future, is looking at the scan of system pathways and really looking at the resources that are already in this community dedicated to be providing the service down the road. So looking at landscape analysis, fiscal mapping of where is the money already in this community that could be reallocated? Um, our strategic planning, um just high level is strengthen our board governance, get our fiscal monitoring underway, creating our data dashboards, um comprehensive infrastructure and revenue strategy is underway. Um, partnership branding communications, and then recruiting a high-performing values-aligned team. So our review, um we are a new five oh one C three. We're committed to that juvenile assessment centerpiece, collaborative community approach, and always data-driven and evidence-informed practices. So our co- our request for you all is um again, Thornton was a founding member of the link and we understand that you made a financial contribution to the link for twenty-two years, and we're just asking for you to continue that pledge with the rest of your municipal partners and Adams County government. So honor the yearly financial contribution to start and continue to support your leadership to serve on our board as we can to kick things off.
And that IGA is coming next week uh to counsel for your consideration.
To address the need and to answer the questions, what are we paying for? Because the link, I wasn't here when the link was formed. I wasn't here when the link was good, but I was here when it dissolved. And I was an advisory board member, not a voting board member. Um, it's so they didn't really have to listen to me. But right now in Adams County, without a juvenile assessment center, we are an anomaly. Um, not just in Colorado, but in the country. We are, we are an anomaly. We're a major county without one of these. Um, so there's a gaping hole right now in 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 Youth and Family Services in Adams County. Well, what about Human Services? Yeah, they do a really good job and they're and they're uh one of our, they're on our board. But they don't specialize in justice-involved kids, and that's a different area. Because kids with significant contact with the criminal justice system are highly likely to become repeat clients. And we talk about breaking cycles. As smart as we've gotten in the fif- in the past fifteen years, and that's sarcasm. Juvenile homicides in Colorado have gone up over two hundred percent. That's kids killing other people, two hundred percent. Suicide is now a leading cause of death um of young people. That's new. Um, and mental health and substance use are at unacceptably high rates. And it's only going to get worse in our county if we don't get it together. Um, right now, the will is behind us. Uh, we've met many of our milestones. We're running into some bureaucratic issues that will push our twenty-four seven opening. It's just the reality of dealing with governments. Present company excluded. But the need is there. Need is there, and and which is why I stayed on board with this project um as a Thornton resident and and no longer the chief of police uh here in in the city of Thornton. We will be different. That's more than a promise. Um, as Becky mentioned, we will move to a more traditional board with more active community members, business members, movers and shakers in Adams County uh for an obvious reason. We need money. We need to rely more on just the municipal contributions because that gives us a baseline of services. Um, so we do want the municipalities to remain involved and to stay on the board, but we will grow. Um, so in addition to waiting and being a net catching kids, our model will also be um to follow up and do some case management. Our model will be to go out into the community uh with the police departments and proactively find kids because the referrals don't work. Uh, a lot of those families, the reason those kids come to the attention of the police departments and uh their schools is because there's some other kind of dysfunction in the home or their the parents or the guardians are at their wits' end. So we plan to go and find them when necessary. Uh, and this is more than just talk. Uh, this is a great board. It's got all the right partners on it in Adams County. Um, and we are all committed because we're sliding down a slope that we won't be able to turn around if we allow this to go on further.
Aaron?
Um, I just remember when the link closed and it was devastating, devastating to our community, devastating to the entire county. So I'm one hundred percent behind signing the IGA and backing this financially. I think we we must have these services.
Jess?
I think I recall seeing has already put a place over in the budget for this, right?
We did.
Your presentation. I think that um it it's a relief to hear that you have some positive forward movement on addressing this critical issue. So of course, we want to help make that happen and continue to support you.
Hey.
I'm in support. I just had a question. I didn't see Westminster on your list.
They um have um great question. Terrence and I actually had an opportunity to meet with the chief. Since the link closed, the City of Westminster opted to use the Jefferson County Jack o- over those last two years. Um, however, they're very interested in coming back, and so we have a ver- verbal commitment that City of Westminster will be included. And and they still have the money in their budget as well.
Jefferson County is being nice and taking kids who offend in Adams County, but Westminster needs an Adams County solution as well.
Chris?
You mentioned that you were working on Broomfield. They give any specific reasons, one and twos, or anything that we can do through our relationships to maybe help facilitate or ease those concerns on their end?
Sure, pressure does work really well in this county. Yes. Looking at the data, uh, looking at the the data, um Broomfield has less offenders um at this time. And so I think they are have a communities that care model and they have some other safety supports. I think um we'd love to have another conversation with them now that we've got more milestones under our belts. So yes, those conversations would be welcome. It is under the seventeenth in our name.
I'm hearing no objection at all. I think it's, we all recognize how important this is. And with a model that can actually survive and do what it's supposed to do than what we had before, I think will be pretty incredible for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whiskey now. That was rude, by the way.
It was funny.
And his little, and under his dress statement was rude. All right, let's talk about homelessness.
So we've got um some near faces. This is a continuation of two other planning sessions. So in April, we came forward to just provide sort of the landscape of city services and some policy issues in the area of um winter weather, um warming shelters, um some of our policies around encampments. And then also tried to give an understanding of the landscape of services that we are providing and some of our collaboration on regional partners. Um, we had some policy questions at that time. Those were deferred to here from the county. Uh, we did have the county with us, I think about six weeks ago. And so this is a continuation. We have updated some of these slides. I think there was in particular some interest in understanding how our um services dovetail with the county. So we we do have some follow-up information on some of that as well. So I'm gonna hand it to Rob to um introduce, and I think he'll kind of moderate through the different pieces of this presentation this evening.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Tansy. Again, just do a quick intro. Uh, most of it actually Tansy covered. We are gonna dive into those three service areas, um pretty in-depth, um severe weather, encampment response and outreach and um emergency sheltering, and then talk about next steps. We have um framed up the each of these three discussions at the end with some kind of a a policy uh questions or policy options for you all and a balance between stay the course. We're we're kind of part of this presentation is again a reminder of what we're doing. And there've been some mod- modifications in each one of these areas. And then we've also provided a couple of options for your consideration. They're not the only options, um but they are hopefully um uh kind of grounding in in some of the um some of the potential changes that um that you all could direct um if the the current level of services, um if you want to change it. Um, Tansy covered this. We were here April fifteenth, and then the county was here on um August nineteenth. The one thing I did want to add is that the the county talked about this a little bit at their presentation, and we had a follow-up uh discussion with their staff. They are um um working on and and plan to share later this year, early next um a a structure approach to to more robust uh regional discussions around homelessness and and other issues. I'm I'm not really sure what the other issues are, but specifically I was interested in the homelessness discussion. And as as the county shared, there's there's varying levels of coordination going on right now, but I think most of it is occurring at kind of the operational level. Um, I I don't know how much is happening at the elected level. I know that Northland hosted a summit a couple of years ago. Uh, I don't, I'm not really sure. As a, just as an observer, I didn't see a lot come out of that. They are looking at at re-in re-initiating those type of regional discussions and including kind of an executive staff level discussion. Um, uh, so w- we express interest in that. I don't know what that's going to look like. Um, I I don't know if that will um plug a gap from a regional standpoint. So I can't really speak greatly to that other than they've indicated that they intend to do that, uh, roll it out later this year, early next. And we have indicated to them that we have a great interest in participating in that discussion. So or to follow. Um, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Kelly to um talk about severe weather. The the I'll just, I'm gonna steal some of your thunder here because it follows the rest of the presentation. We do, um, the, these presentations are structured similarly, and that will again, review the level of service. This is, this is very much kind of building on what was discussed in April with you all. Um, for uh as we did in April and and have advanced a little bit, there's some uh regional or comparative jurisdiction information that we wanted to share that we think is important. And then with each one of these, um, we've kind of got, we've tried to frame up a policy just um uh considerations around a specific issue. This one is about alternative site evaluation for um severe weather sheltering. And then at the end, like I said, we have provoked, provided some options for your consideration. Um, but we are looking for for your direction. Do you want us to stay the course in these areas, or do you want us to explore one of these different options? So I'm gonna turn over to Chief.
Thanks, Rob. Uh, I'll just jump right into this um this presentation. I will note that the emergency management, which is sort of the core of our severe weather, cold weather care program, um is where this falls under in the fire department. Chief Hobbs is here tonight, also oversees our emergency manager. But when we talk about this severe weather weather response, it is really a police, fire, parks and recreation, community connections, infrastructure, it is a communications. It is all departments working together to make this successful. And um I'll spend a little time going over uh sort of where we're at today with our cold weather care program. Uh, our winter cold weather care program. So first things first, when we open our uh warming centers, uh, we have some thresholds that we'll go over in a minute. There's two, there's two levels of warming centers that we provide. We provide daytime warming centers, and that is really a our recreation centers really come kind of the top of our mind, but it's really any public facility that we have in the city serves as a warming center. The public can come in, get out of the cold. And then overnight, when we have extreme cold weather, uh, we historically have opened a Car- Carbonar Rec Center for our overnight cold weather warming center. And and our warming center is designed for protection from life-threatening cold weather conditions. It is not set up as a shelter. And so I wanted to highlight a couple of things that we're providing and things that we are not providing. We are providing a safe place from cold weather exposure. We are trying to prevent uh life-threatening conditions, um cold, from cold injuries. We provide transportation to that warming center via police and fire resources, uh ride share. We we get individuals to our warming center. Uh, we provide prepackaged, ready-to-eat meals, water, restroom facilities. We connect individuals that come to our warming centers with the hot team, with community connections. We provide security and we provide other staff to support that that warming center. We are not, we're not providing cots, we're not providing hot meals, we're not providing uh showers, we're not providing, we're not setting up as a shelter. So we are an emergency uh warming center, overnight warming center. That is what we are providing. I'm gonna brief, you've seen this slide many times. We've talked about this a lot. This is our, the threshold at which we activate our warming centers, our overnight warming centers. And and really to point out, we activate at tier two and tier one. Uh, tier three is our swap activation. And I'll highlight on swap that when swap is connecting individuals with with hotel vouchers, once we have used up all of our swap vouchers and there's no remaining, we do have a city hotel voucher program where we are connecting individuals that have special needs, healthcare needs, service animals, families. Um, we're connecting those, those groups or individuals with hotel vouchers. Um, and so we are, we are doing that in every cold weather event, from the swap activation all the way to tier one, which is really our extreme. We're talking about highs in the single digits, uh, when significant, really threat, life-threatening conditions. Our activation threshold for overnight warming centers is daytime highs of thirty-two or below and nighttime lows of twenty and below. Little data from last winter, and this is from the first time we activated in twenty-four till the last time we activated in twenty-five. We opened our overnight warming center for a total of seventeen nights. That was seven, seven separate activations. Some of them were for multiple nights. We saw a total of seventy-two individuals. Our high, uh, sorry, our average was around six or seven per night using the warming center. Uh, the maximum we saw was twelve in one night. And then there's some other data there on swap, and I think then later on in the presentation, you're gonna hear more about swap as well. Please feel free to stop me if you have any questions as we go.
Yes.
Seventeen nights at the Amara Carpenter Center.
Correct.
And you know if any, were there any um calls for service from the police department regarding the the homeless population staying and and those activated nights?
I do not have that data in front of me, whether we have calls those those nights. We can certainly look into it.
That'd be very important to have that.
Okay. This table that you have in in um the PowerPoint, uh, the one thing that I'm gonna highlight here is is really just the level at which Thornton activates our warming center uh compared to our neighboring jurisdictions. Our level to activate is Our level to activate is, is, how do I say this right? We're more likely to activate our warming center than many of our neighboring jurisdictions. Their warming center activation threshold has significantly lower temperatures. And so I think that's just a recognition to keep in mind of where, when we're opening our doors, many of our neighbors around us aren't potentially opening warming centers or or emergency disaster shelters. As part of this analysis, a team from the city took a comprehensive look at really all city properties. We we looked at from the city hall, the justice center to the police training facility. We looked at fire stations. We looked at the public safety facility. We looked at recreation centers. Looked at McAllister, other city properties. We looked at the IMC and the MSC. We really looked at every location in the city that we have available to locate overnight, an overnight warming center. And we really reduced this list down into six, six key facilities that we think feel would be viable to support overnight warming center operations at the threshold that we are currently opening our warming center at.
Why is the Thornton Community Center not on that list?
We did look at the community center, so we did look at that as a facility as well. There, one reason it didn't reach the six building threshold is that there are, there were other facilities in close proximity that we felt would have, would be better suited than that facility and weren't in neighboring proximity. There are some other issues as well with that facility that are not necessarily they're not necessarily deal breakers, but there are some issues. One has to do with generator utilization, that facility, where if we do have a power outage, we lose some functionality of that facility, which is we have other facilities that also have that issue. So I'm not going to say that's not the one, but we did evaluate it, but there is some proximity to community connections, which is also on this list that we felt rose to this level of six.
Okay.
Is that actually a question?
Yeah, it seems like if more of a carpenter center is a candidate, there's a very similar from my very superficial knowledge, that facility is similar. So I would have thought it would be in the list.
It is similar. It has some, there are some other conflicts that don't make it as as viable. And so part of it too, it has to do with the the, how much of the space can we actually isolate as space for individuals to use versus having just large open areas? There are, there's a number of factors that we went into. So I think this, this six is that's one we could certainly, we could address.
That answers my question. I just, it seemed from a naive perspective that that they'd be equivalent, but I think you guys, just wanted you guys to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, we certainly did. No, no building was left unturned. I think some of the, some of the, some of the department heads were asking me why we were there looking at sort of the, we looked at a lot of locations that have a lot, potentially a lot of conflict, so. Well, I'm going to start with, these are not in any order of priority. These are just, this is the way I wrote the slide. So starting with Margaret Carpenter, this is our current location. I'm going to run through a few of the positives and we can talk about the challenges. There, there, one thing with Margaret Carpenter is we, we have a known challenge. We have a known conflict or intersection with use of an overnight warming center and the daily both public use and and city use of that facility. That is a known issue and we're going to address that with some of the other issues too. Some of the key sort of positives with Margaret Carpenter, we have concurrent staffing there. It's an activated facility. There are people there. It transitions very well from a, from a daytime warming center and then into an overnight warming center. It's centrally located on a major artery. There's a number of transportation routes nearby, R D D stops. The accessibility is is very good. And it is a site that we would look at for expansion into an emergency shelter if needed. It is one of our emergency shelters. Recently, we just ran through an exercise of opening, opening an emergency shelter in the setting of a disaster impacting a large portion of the population or a large portion of the community. It's a very walkable location. There are additional resources nearby that are walking distance from Margaret Carpenter.
Go ahead, Justin, then I've got something too.
What elements of the Margaret Carpenter Rec Center operations do you see from your research impacted by the uses that we saw last season?
Sure. I think one of the key functions of the recreation center is that as we as we see growing use of the warming center and individuals staying there overnight, there is a there's increasing shared use among different user groups. We have classes, we have daytime users. And these, the function of that space wasn't necessarily there may be some perception of the expected use of that space. We have overnight individuals that are are sharing that exact same space. That is probably the key challenge of intersecting uses.
The other thing, and this isn't unique to Margaret Carpenter, but you saw the numbers. I think it was averaging six to seven, peaked at seventeen. But it's grown over, over the years that we've done this. And so the other thing that we're being cognizant of is to the extent that the, the number of participants expands, we may need to eventually get to a point where we have an isolated kind of room for this service. And and this facility as well of all the other facilities, that isolated room right now is programmed for other purposes. You know, think about the multipurpose room, it's birthday parties, that kind of stuff. And so eventually there, we may get to the point where, you know, we need to actually create a space for this service and therefore not have the opportunity to have those other type of programming uses. And again, that's not unique to Margaret Carpenter. You'll see that through, through the analysis, really all of our viable sites at this point.
Thank you.
And one area of concern that I've had, in particular, if we continue to use Margaret Carpenter this way, is we probably need to add additional cameras. Some of the complaints I've heard from the residents is in particular near the entryway, there are some altercations that happen that we don't get picked up on our cameras. And so it's very difficult to hold individuals accountable for behavior when there's no record other than two people yelling at each other. So I think that's, security features are probably going to be important. Should we continue the use?
Do you mean inside or outside?
I would guess both. I don't know what camera do we have or don't have. The comments I heard was mostly in the lobby area, but I don't know if that's an accurate statement.
I would say outside as well, because there have been times when you get there early in the morning and there are people hanging around right outside that external, you know, there's sort of a place around the corner from the entryway using drugs openly right there. I've reported it. I've watched the staff deal with it. And so that is happening also right there.
Next item we evaluated or the next item on the list, this is is Trail Winds. Similar, we have not used Trail Winds as an overnight warming center, but we can, there's a we recognize the operational, similar to Trail Winds, we have an operational impact with day where you, when we would, if we were utilized as an overnight warming center. Additional challenges with Trail Winds, it is not necessarily centrally located. It's not on a major transportation corridor. There are limited adjacent services. Some of the benefits, it does provide concurrent staffing because we are using the space during the day. So that transition from day to night uses does occur there. And we do have a number of levels of separatable space. So if we did have to expand into an emergency shelter type setting, it would be fairly easy to do that in Trail Winds. This general theme you'll see through a number of facilities, then we'll transition to some other ones.
Real quick?
Oh, sorry.
I just want to go back to the staff impact on the, on the Carpenter one. I know it says low on here. I'm guessing that's just for the overnight component because there's already staff there. What is that for?
That's because there's already staff there. So as we, as we, if we look at a location that does not have a daytime sort of activated staff use like a recreation center, we do recognize the need to move staff from one facility to another to provide provide resources to the individuals utilizing the warming center.
So McAllister is an example. McAllister is on the list we'll get into. We don't have staffing there during the day. We would need to identify, find and pay staff to move over to that facility when it's activated as a daytime shelter, if that were to end up to be where we ended up.
So I guess the question is on the staff in the morning time, because in addition to individuals using drugs openly, you have others who have sat on the bench outside and then police have called, been called multiple times for that during the day. That's also an impact on staff. And so if we choose or designate a location, regardless of which one, you build it, you open it, they're coming. And so we can say that there's only seven or seventeen nights, but if it becomes known as the location, these things go way beyond just the overnight use and the impact on staff. And so I guess, is that a factor in when you're considering this? Because we know for a fact that that has been an impact on staff outside of overnight warming shelter, warming center.
I think this is, this is a very, I mean, this is a challenging topic. And I think when we look at all of these facilities in total, there is not, there is not a single solution that stands out and says, this is, this is what we should do as a city. What we are, what we are providing is a warming center that we open during the day, which, which I, which we have many. We are not going to stop the use of any public facility being a place when it's, when it's ten degrees out and and wind chills and, you know, when we have severe conditions, any city facility, we are going to welcome the public inside to, to come in out of the weather. When those conditions persist overnight, we are looking for a space and we have been using Carpenter Recreation Center as that overnight space.
I understand all that. I'm just asking if the staff impact section is also considered for the after? Because that's another impact that is may, may or may not be a factor in this particular chart that I'm looking at. While it is low, it is not low when the staff who may not be a part of the overnight shelter are then dealing with the situation the next morning.
Yeah, I think the the staff impact column is I hear you a hundred percent. If you're a staff member that's going to be charged with having to manage this program, you're going to have an impact. That chart is meant to say, hey, do we already have staff that are at the facility versus having to bring people or hire people to do that? So we acknowledge that, that it isn't, it isn't necessarily low to the people who are doing the work.
And so is that staffer or whoever also then there during the day or they're only there during the warming shelter?
The staffing is not set up where somebody works overnight and then goes right into their morning shift. I don't, that's not the intended design. The overnight staffing, while we do utilize recreation center staff and other city staff, we also have our cert team that helps staff that night. We also have contract security guards that we bring from the city, city hall to the facility.
So none of those locations then would have any staffing considered after or the morning after it? No matter where they're designated, whatever gets designated, there's nobody there after the period of time for the overnight or the next day or during the day when, I mean, if Carpenter, Trail Winds, Active Adult, Community Connections, even the, even McAllister, Bussel Ridge, if what, no matter who's designated, the staffing is only for the piece that's part of the actual warming center time period? So maybe, yeah, let me retrain. So I, I think yes, overnight supplemental staffing is needed across the board at all of these locations. The difference in the staffing is some of these have daytime staffing that, to your point, those individuals are adding additional activities to their, their daytime activities. That where, where we've made the distinction is some facilities don't have any staffing during the daytime at all. And so like we have to bring in a supplemental staffing overnight, that what we're trying to designate is in some cases, if you were to do daytime warming shelters at those, those locations, we would, I, we would have to identify a staffing model to, to staff that. Because there's no existing staffing during the day. So the daytime, so it's low because there's daytime staff, but those daytime staff are separate from the regular rec center staff? We're leveraging existing resources during the day. If it's an elderly person that can have, you know, or even a young person, are they all trained to handle these situations? So we, it was an area of evaluation that we identified shortcomings last year that initially, I think only additional train, targeted training was initially only provided to the staff overnight. I believe we did identify that as a shortcoming and did do some targeted training to those individuals that were during the, during, there during the day. And I think that would be anticipated to continue that both staff during the day and overnight would receive.
All right, Justin, then Roberta.
So the last year, we had this Margaret Carpenter Rec Center. The primary daytime staff was the rec center staff, correct? Why was the homeless outreach team not there during the day? It seems like a match made in heaven. You have the homeless outreach team where a bunch of people who are attending homeless are.
Yeah, so we could certainly give direction. I mean, I think that, and partially the homeless outreach team was continuing to do outreach to individuals through the community. So we, we could give direction in the future that that those site based activities in the community would cease during cold weather activations. I don't think that had been the expect, I think there were some targeted visits from the housing outreach team to the shelters, but they were continuing to do their outreach activities at known encampment sites at other spots to the community, both offering swap aid and and promoting the, what, the inclement weather shelter. Certainly, we could say during activations, hot is going to cease other activities and and shift their activity to the warming shelters. But there would be a trade off in terms of.
Well, I would, I would say at the minimum that somebody from homeless outreach team should be there because they're, of all the employees in the city, they should be the most trained to handle this population. And so having them there would be a great opportunity for them to leverage providing services and outreach to that targeted population, because that's where they're going.
As Tansy mentioned, our primary response during an emergency like this is to do outreach, find our people, get them vouchers and get them out of the cold. We also did have at least one of our hot members at every activation to identify who's there. Do we have a relationship with them? Are they in our case management system? Are they in our software? What do you need? How can we support you? That was coordinated.
Yeah, that would be something we want to keep doing, no matter where it is.
I agree. Thank you.
Jessica, you had a question on his question, then we'll get to you, Roberta.
Just ask, what times were you guys there?
It varied depending on how many vouchers we had remaining that we needed to get out.
After evening hours overnight?
It was in the evening and sometimes it was in the early morning.
What's the latest?
The latest? Maybe ten, ten thirty?
And there was a hot person at the rec center during those times?
We did have hot at the rec center. It was not a consistent time, but we did have a hot team member at the rec center, yes.
So I'll just speak to what I observed at Carpenter when I've been there after a cold weather event in the evening. It seems really stressful, especially for the staff working there because they're trying to deal with their primary job, which is offering recreation services to the community. So like checking out basketballs, helping people understand how a punch card works. Like I saw this stuff, they're like explaining things and trying to have these in-depth conversations about the services we offer at the rec center. All the while, we have folks kind of like still in the common area doing what they need to do to either, you know, move forward with their day or staying in there because they're cold and needing resources. And so you know, this was, this was just what was heavy on my mind with that situation is that we just have so many community members that want to use the building for its intended purposes and we're offering a completely different service there that we have people that aren't even really trained in depth. Maybe they've had some basic training, but they're not really trained in depth to deal with the magnitude of supporting folks that are unhoused and offering any type of minimal wraparound service that might help them get somewhere else. So it just seems like number one, a lost opportunity and number two, a real difficult situation to put workers in, in our city when they are there primarily to offer support to our preschool kids. You know, kids checking out basketballs, things like that, so.
But and again, I think But, and again, I think that the purpose of today is to get your feedback, where there's consensus about where. There is desire to change locations or services models. So again, I think when, when this program was initially. Put together prior to last year, the goal was to, to try to minimize costs by leveraging existing sort. S- staff resources. Certainly, we could get direction from staff to supplement. Existing daytime resources regardless of the location, that certainly will add costs to the program, but is, is certainly something we can do. Uh, and I a- appreciate the feedback a- about the hot team, and I think there's interest in increasing the coordination. The other piece I ju- I just want to um be practical about is the hot team, it has limited. Personnel on it. These shelters go for days for twenty-four hours. And so we can certainly revisit the way. To stage those hot resources through unactivation. But again, the, the recreation staff has. Many more staff to be able to cover shifts when there's a prolonged activation and we're running for twenty-four hours. Than the limited hot team. We can, again, definitely strategize how to optimize. That um, the exposure to the hot team a- across that, but, but the reality is we, we. Uh, with that amount of staffing, I think our longest activation was seven days.
Sounds right.
Um, and so, you know, ultimately that's twenty-four hours for s- for seven days. And so. There is at some point a reasonable amount of work hours that we could ask any, eh, any single employee to cover.
You still have any other questions?
I appreciate all that, but it's hard to make a decision when these are serious concerns and no matter which location is a serious concern. So. We've figured out how to get other departments to, to work hours that are outside the normal. Whatever they were hired for, working hours to cover situations. If a, if a severe weather activation is happening, it surely seems like that would also be the case for a team that's specialized. We might have more rec center staff, but those rec center staff are not mostly trained to deal with situations that are coming up. And so I have serious concerns about putting this on rec center staff as the main staffing source if we have a. Another group of individuals within the city that are actually trained for that.
Yeah, again, we can explore additional staffing. What, what I am, I, I do think and, and we can consider that. And that we definitely do have other parts of the city, whether that's um. Road use, kinds of activities, other kinds of activities in response to inclement weather. Again, those are large. Employee bases, so that, and, and hot team, I believe we have four staff. And so, they're. We, again, we can come back and, and say, here's the way we could optimize a hot team. Um, over a period. Again, we're, we're talking about twenty-four hour staffing for prolonged periods of time. And so I, I, we, we can come back and, and share what would it look like to pull the hot team. From normal activities, dedicate them to cold weather staffing. And I'm still not sure if we were talking about round the. Round the clock staffing. For a prolonged period of time that that would provide sufficient staffing to meet that need.
But you're saying then the rec center staff is now responsible if the hot team is not.
If, if we get direction from um city council that you do not wish to have recreation staff. In that role, we will identify an alternative staffing model. I'm just saying realistically, I'm not sure that we can rely on only this, the, the hot resources.
I would say, yeah, if we want to double our hot team, I'm willing to ask them to do that, but right now we have four people. And they're actually going out into the cold weather, gathering people to get them to a warming center. I'm not willing to leave anybody out in the cold, and I think we have to be supportive. Whether we ask Tansy to find other staffing. Fine, I'm happy to, you know, find more staffing, find people that are trained to help with the warming center. But I'm not willing to not have a warming center or expect a, a four person team. To be responsible wholly for that warming center.
And just to be clear, I don't think anyone is.
It feels that way.
If, if only, I think it's all of the above.
It's not sounding great.
Four is not enough, rec center staff's not enough, not trained.
Uh, suggestion, I guess, in the model, perhaps it's something that we could put out to all the city employees to see who would wanna. Maybe volunteer for that role and then they can go through the training. We can do that in this, you know, s- summer, fall months, and then now we've got a body of individuals that we could call up, whether they're with infrastructure or police or. Whatever. I don't know what that would yield. Second follow up to that would be. Would it have to be city staff? Or if we were to open this to outside individuals that are there to assist. Perhaps the community would come and help us and do that volunteer, go through the training, whatever they need. And even if, you know, with the combination of city staff and volunteers, maybe those are s-. Options, I don't know, I'm gonna put those out there because it seems like we're trying to say like.
Yeah, I appreciate, and we do have volunteers overnight.
We do, and I, I will add to that to what you just said. We do have. A, a cost code or a, a HR code for shelter staff, and we've been able to hire. Some of our cert volunteers into that position as a temporary staff and then I can connect them with the staffing. Times. So we do have that mechanism in place to hire individuals on a temporary basis into this sort of. Sh- shelter support um code.
I do think what would be helpful perhaps is some feedback is. What I'm maybe hearing is that during the day, there's discomfort with asking. Staff that have other duties during the day to take on this additional and that you'd like us to explore. The cost of dedicated staffing during the day to support this. We can certainly. Identify what, what might be the models in terms of volunteers from other departments. Um, or dedicated staffing specifically, that could be s- additional staffing. From recreation. Um, again, people that would have access to training but would be dedicated. To those activities during the day. Um, I think I'm hearing consensus interest to explore what that would look like. Regardless of the location, that there would be dedicated staffing for those daytime activities supporting the warming shelter.
Yeah, I would just say don't, we shouldn't make the assumption or shape or anybody, for all we know, there is rec staff that is willing, able, they feel comfortable handling. Two roles maybe during the day. So uh, we're kind of just circling here and trying to pinpoint the exact personnel. And that's the origin of my comments is. Think it's fairly solvable with even more outreach, but again, also just not speaking for current staff and saying. You know, why should they have to do that? Some may openly be willing to do that or carry those roles. So I like what you've said in combination of what I'm saying and then, you know, identifying the exact person, persons. To be determined, but we have some methods in which we could fill or bolster that staffing, I think. A lot of good ideas, I can say.
All right, Jessica and Cherish.
Is there a number like, I don't know, at a daycare, you have a certain number of kids for, for an adult? Is there also a number that would be. Provide, you know, like optimal for if we had seven, if we had fifteen. The number of staff that are trained, because I, I, you know, if you have the public coming in in the morning. Or anytime for that matter, if there's any individuals that's overnight and it's just unhoused. If there's a situation that arises, what's the number and are they able to deescalate? I mean, those are all the training things, but. What's the magic number for how many staff?
We look at a warming center of up to twenty people. We look for three trained staff to be supporting it, one of those being a security guard and two other. Sort of support staff. As we see, and we haven't seen this, but when we see numbers exceeding twenty, then we look at bringing additional staff in. So I think if you say, you know, if I can give you a, a number is three to five staff members for a shelter of a, for a warming center of up to twenty people. And so, again, when we look at. If we're looking at daytime and nighttime operations and, and multiple days, then that. Three is obviously not sufficient, so we can, and we can evaluate what that, that group can look like.
And so, so like daytime staff, again, if there's regular daytime staff, whether they decide they want to be a part of this or not. They're still dealing with the regular public coming in. And so is there an additional staff person there that's just. There to handle any situations that might come up?
There has not been traditionally, but I think what we were hearing is a, a request to evaluate that. I, uh. I don't, I don't want to speak for discussions that happened before I came. I think some of the assumption was. That there, there definitely are staff at the front desk of the rec center, but there is also other staff. That are working within the recreation center. And I think some of the assumptions were that those individuals could. Call on or rely on other staff in the building fulfilling other functions if the, the workload became too significant. But I understand the, the question and the concern that's being raised.
All right, I have Cherish and then Roberta. You're good Cherish? All right, Roberta?
Yeah, I think. Uh, as far as the staff is concerned, I mean, a big part of this is the, the location, right? I was just thinking in my head, it's like if you had a library and you're like, and we're also gonna have tap dancing classes in the middle of the library. You know, like, it's loud and people are trying to read books and it's like, you have two different per, you know, two different things going on and conflicting in a space is conflicting. Um, and that's kind of where I'm, I'm at with it, is like, we won't have the iss- as many issues with the staffing model. Because you don't have people trying to do two different jobs if you have a location where it's just more appropriate. And they can do the job of helping people. Obtain resources and be safe, like, so I, I, I. My interest is to move on in the conversation, so we can look at other options for locations.
And before we do that, Karen?
I just want to say, as we're looking at locations, it's really important that. A centrally located in the city and B, there's access to transportation. That's vitally important. Thank you.
I'm gonna go quickly through this next one, Active Adults Center. We did evaluate, it has very similar positives and challenges with. With Margaret Carpenter, and I think we can probably leave. Can probably leave it out of the conversation, um, but it is adjacent to Margaret Carpenter and has the same, same pluses and minuses. Move on to the next one. The next one we evaluated, this is Fossil Ridge. Um, one key benefit to Fossil Ridge is we have a large training room. Uh, it is not centrally located, is not on many transportation routes. Uh, there are limited other facility resources. And this concurrence, concurrency and staffing, we don't have to get more into that, but this is um. We did evaluate Fossil Ridge's location. Community Connections. Some positives, as, as already have been discussed, there is co-location with Community Connections resources. They are right there, again. Even if they're being out, if they're going out in the field, there is some, some intersection with their, their workday with individuals who may be using both daytime and nighttime. Warming center, uh, warming center at the, at Community Connections. It is, Community Connections is centrally located, we talk about population centers of the city. Uh, and it is proximal to many transportation corridors. There are a large number of RTD stops on Eppinger, Washington. Um, in that general area. Some of the challenges is it is not necessarily walkable to nearby services. Um, it is, it is located in a residential neighborhood. We recognize these as, as challenges with using Community Connections of both the daytime and overnight warming center.
What walkable services are around Carpenter besides a bunch of gas stations?
When we looked at, when we looked at services like that, that is essentially what we were looking at is what is, what is walkable nearby, is location kind of isolated. In a residential area, or there are places that if individuals wanted to leave the facility during the day, is something, is there something in walkable distance?
Yeah, I get it, but it's just like, it, it, Carpenter's in, almost in the same situation aside from gas stations. A dispensary, Chinese restaurant, pizza restaurant. I mean, that's cool, you know, I'm just saying, there's not like a bunch of stuff around Carpenter. It's not like it's in the middle of the city or anything like that.
Understood.
Can you tell me how close, um. You're saying proximity to transit routes, what's the closest transit route to this facility?
I did have that. It is, there is a li- there is an RTD line that runs and stops on Eppinger. Um, down Eagle from the Community Connections.
There are none within one quarter of a mile, but there are some within one half of a mile.
Yeah, half mile. That's, that's a lot, you know, when you're saying that you can't be exposed for more than ten minutes on some of these.
The, the last site on the list of six is McAllister. So we evaluated McAllister as an option. There are some positives and there are some challenges. Again, there's no, the, the staffing is. Needing to staff the facility continues to exist there. There is concurrent use with the community chorus and the Thor- and the Thornton Band. Uh, it is located on Huron Street, which is a transportation corridor, and it is centrally located when we talk about. Major transportation routes here on uh I twenty-five, Thornton Parkway, there's accessi- accessibility. Um, and when we talk about walkability, I, I hear what everyone's saying, there, there is some walkability in the area.
Just to be clear, I mean, some of this is, that we're comparing them relatively to each other. And so it's, I, I understand some of the. Um, definitions of walkability for transit or for resources, but they're being compared to each other. Not to an optimal site.
And does this one have a generator?
The site does not have a generator, so that is. And I can. The frequency that we lose power in the city is, is low. Um, and if we were using a site as a warming center and lost power, we would work on a transportation plan to move individuals out of that site to a different one. And those are things that from an emergency management standpoint, we can certainly leverage. So I don't want to. Say that that's a, that we, there's, there's ways that we can work around it. We can also look at using a temporary generator. There's some work that we can do with building maintenance and management services. To, to develop those connections to, to provide those resources if, if this is a direction that we want to go. Going back to what I said earlier, we did look at a lot of facilities. These were viewed as less appropriate and less viable. Whether it was concurrency with operations during cold weather events um or other city uses. So we did not consider these as viable solutions. This chart uh really just highlights, going back to what I said earlier, there is not a singular. Optimal location that we've identified. Um, this highlights some of the. The issues and challenges, the pluses and minuses, um, and various, various factors that took into consideration. Uh, from Margaret Carpenter through McAllister.
Cherish?
Could you tell us why Margaret Carpenter was used originally?
Certainly, uh, when we first started leaning into cold weather operations, um, and even before having just an overnight warming center. As we dealt with cold weather events, Margaret Carpenter has been our traditional emergency shelter. So when we're setting up emergency shelter operations where we're bringing, uh, again, if we were to, uh. Have a major fire in an apartment building and we had, you know, a hundred plus individuals that we need to move into a shelter. Margaret Carpenter is our shelter location. So because it was utilized and identified for that reason. From an emergency management standpoint, that was a logical transition into these overnight sheltering, warming center scenarios. Um, but again, I, we, we, all of us recognize that, that challenge. So I. I think we're looking for a, a feedback. Uh, we have a number of options here to, to walk through. Uh. Number one is to continue our current plan as we have been in previous uh winters. Given, I think, some of the suggestions regarding staffing that we can look into and continue that at Carpenter Rec Center. Uh, we can continue warming center operations at Community Connections, and I'll say there's a, there's a two A and a two B. If Community Connections is not the location, I think our two B is McAllister as a, as a two B location. The third option is looking at a very specific space in one of these facilities that we say, this is the warming center. Whether it's a multipurpose room, whether it's a, a location in another facility and we. Uh, really dedicate that space to warming center operations and provide both. The staffing as we talked about, and that is the location for our warming center. Number four is not necessarily for this winter, but really looking at future winter seasons. Um, and. This is uh really if there's an interest in providing additional services when, as we're, if we're. Wanting to look past a warming center. Uh, into more sheltering type scenarios. That is not something we're necessarily prepared to do this winter to provide. You know, warm meals, uh, wraparound, full wraparound services, cots, living, a living space, that is. Uh, that would be something we'd look at. That is, uh, that would be something we'd look at later in another, now years. Feedback.
Jessica?
Okay, so just thinking about those locations again, what, what would it take? And this is just a really crazy idea about, like, could we switch locations? Like move Community Connections out of Community Connections and into McAllister Building and McAllister Services over to Community Connections? And then have all the art stuff in that area? Taxi is right there. The band could play there. Just throwing it out there.
So I, I guess this is where I, I would, uh, jump into that. Um, I did, did get an inquiry from Councilmember Salazar about the status of the planning at McAllister. So I think if that is something that the City Council wants to explore sooner rather than later, would, would be positive to, to start that. We have had a community-based, um, planning process at McAllister. Now, as I understand from an update that I got from the Parks and Recreation Team, much of that master plan has been focused on the grounds, um, of McAllister. Not as much at, on the building itself. But that, uh, we have had a fairly prolonged community-based planning process. And this has not been discussed as a part of that process. So I do think, um, we would want to bring those stakeholders to the table in some way. Um, I think we are reaching the end of that master planning process at, um, McAllister Park. So I don't, um, I, I think we'd wanna be thoughtful about how now we'd introduce this idea to that community. You know, they've been through a, a fairly, they've participated in a fairly prolonged engagement plan about, about the future of that park.
That's great that that building had that, but if we're gonna turn Carpenter into this and do no community planning, master planning, I don't think that's fair in any way at all. If the community hasn't been aware of what this plan is, or, or you're saying that, you know, McAllister had a big community planning event to pr- to plan programming and talk about the future, why wouldn't we do the same thing for Carpenter? Because this is a new use for that center that has never been discussed by that community. And it's very unfair to have that done without their input.
I, I do, um, I do appreciate, again, and I think, uh, a slight distinction I think would, that would be fair to make. The, the underlying use of Margaret Carpenter is still a community center. Maybe I misunderstood. I, I thought I understood that it's a permanently shifting Community Connection.
I'm just saying that that is, is that even an option?
It is.
Not, nothing to do with that planning that's already happened, just is that even an option? If we're looking at all the pros and cons in this column.
I, I think there likely would need to be facility modifications made at McAllister to, to, to serve Community Connections and likely potentially changes at Community Connections. Yes, certainly it could, it could be, um, evaluated. I, I did wanna be clear that again, we, um, there, right now that there is an ongoing master planning process at McAllister. So certainly we will do whatever the council gives direction to do. Just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that that process has been, um, happening at, at McAllister Park.
I have Justin, then Roberta.
Yeah, I, I think that, that I, I think a location, in my opinion, McAllister checks all the boxes for location. It has challenges of, mentioned of the staffing and then the generator, which I'm glad you mentioned that, 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 those can be addressed. You know, it's not like a generator for a rec center, which is gonna be much larger and not. So I'm very interested in the McAllister as this temporary or as the emergency shelter. If we were gonna relocate it, that, that seems a good opportunity there. And I'm not as concerned about the staffing issue because we've already at length discussed staffing issue at these existing places where staff, cause it's not really solved by having the, the status quo. Or if we were to do it in another location where there was staff already there, we would still have some of these challenges. So McAllister would present us the opportunity to really plan out a holistic staffing uh, solution to this that is specifically designed to serve this problem. Whereas what we currently have is a bit more ad hoc, where we've got, hey, we've got some staff members here. They're already here. Let's throw on some duties so then maybe we'll give them a extra bit of pay. Well, that could be, that doesn't necessarily address, I think, some of the concerns that we've heard today. So, um, yeah, my, my, uh, I, I think that McAllister is much better located than Community Connections. And, uh, it's that half mile. It's a, I think it's about point four miles from the nearest bus stop to Community Connections. That's, it's gonna be a challenge, especially when it's, it's also up at, uh, it's up a hill. And also we're doing this for cold weather, so it could be dangerous to ask people to go up that hill in the freezing cold. I don't wanna be, uh, risk liable for encouraging the dangerous walk up a hill in the ice and cold just to get to the warming center. If the public transit is only option for, uh, moving around the city or the region.
Yeah, I think, um, anything we could do to make that possible would be a good alternative or just a good plan in general. Um, I think the biggest concern I have and the concern I had in, in visiting, um, Carpenter was that there was a night that it was pretty close to twenty already. And so like, if we continue to approach the number of twenty and go over, then we're at capacity and we're over capacity. And if Carpenter's capacity is only twenty, there's other options on this list that are twenty to forty. So that being said, I was, um, thinking about Community Connections, but McAllister is also a great option. I, I fully respect the fact that the commu- the community in the area has been working on plans for that area because, you know, I was chairing Dia de los Marcos for years and I love the area for that event. And I think it's great that we've had the, the choir and the band there. And we're, and we were trying to make it more of like a performing arts area. But the, the fact of the matter is, is that we have a, a, a crisis with homelessness that's not getting any better. And as council members, we have to make tough decisions to move some of these things. Um, that's good leadership is sometimes making decisions that aren't fun. But we have to make decisions that, to, to make this better. And putting this, putting people in a situation where there's approaching capacity and then it will be in a situation where we can't use Carpenter for its intended purposes is really not fair to the residents of, um, the area that utilize Carpenter or any, any resident of Thornton that wants to utilize Carpenter, because I'm sure people drive them all over to use it. But also it's just not serving the wraparound purposes of like getting resources to people that need it. And I think we're kind of like just missing an opportunity with that, so.
And thank you for allowing me to clarify. We do believe McAllister is a, is a, um, viable option for winter weather sheltering. That's why we've brought it here. My, my feedback in terms of planning was really not, we'll do communication and outreach if we were to make a change in terms of winter weather sheltering. I think my feedback about planning was really more this idea of a permanent relocation of Community Connections to McAllister and McAllister becoming the home of Community Connections. And if, if that was the direction to the council to explore that, then in, in that certain, in that circumstance, we may want to interject some of that planning in the planning that's happening for McAllister currently. So I wasn't speaking to the warming shelter operations, but the question about the viability of relocating Community Connections permanently full-time into that location.
I think the consensus is to explore that option, to see if it's viable. I think the other thing is the, the band would need to be relocated as well, the choir. So maybe they can do a swap and move them over to Community, the current Community Connections. Or even the taxi, I don't know if it's big enough for them to have rehearsals there or not, but.
I think they used to, but there was something changed with that, like they wanted to start running it to them or something like that. I don't know exactly, but.
That's probably something that could be worked out.
There's a bunch of really weird history on all that, but I mean, ultimately they just wanted a place to practice. And I, I mean, the McAllisters are, it's, it's a weird facility also, say that. It's cool. It's, it's cool to practice in, because it's, it's like a church, but like, it also just needs a ton of ADA stuff done too. Like, it is very interesting also that.
Yeah, there's no doubt we need to make capital improvements at McAllister to make it, uh, viable for the kinds of services that happen in Connections. But we could certainly identify what those might be.
Said something about consensus, but I don't know, I'm unclear on what you mean by that.
Explore the option of moving it, cause I heard, saw everybody's heads nodding yes when she said, you want us to explore the option of moving Community Connections to McAllister to see if it's a viable replacement? Yes.
Um, but I also think that, if we're talking about the warming center, that McAllister is best placed.
At two, yes, that's, I saw the heads nodding for that too. Both of those things are true.
Everybody on both sides in the room?
One, two, three, four, five. I saw Dave's head nodding and I saw Karen and Chris kind of just looking to decide.
I'm good with either with Margaret Carpenter or McAllister. I think they both offer pretty similar benefits, accessibility.
And at this point, it's not making decisions, it's exploring an option.
For the warming center?
For both.
I think we have to explore that, both of those locations. But I also think that if we move, if we move, um, Community Connections over to McAllister and use that as a warming center, we're also gonna have to staff up. Because we're gonna have enough people on staff.
Yep, and I think there was consensus already to say we're gonna have to add additional staff anyway, regardless of where the warming shelter is. We don't have enough train staff to do that anyway.
And I, I'm just gonna state the obvious. I don't think the warming center location at McAllister and Community Connections are necessarily tied. Those could be two separate decisions on two separate timeframes. I do think in terms of, so we can, we can come back with you on a longer term. What would that look like to evaluate Community Connections moving to McAllister? We will need to move quickly in or, in order to prepare for, um, for Game of Thrones fan, winter is coming. And so we, um, we, we will need to move relatively quickly to make plans to move to McAllister. I believe staff can, can make that work. We've already evaluated that we believe that it, it, it is viable to do that. And so I guess I would like a little, I think that is sort of the direction for this inclement weather season to. And again, we can evaluate. We're gonna learn things.
I think it's important though that the band understands, because they're not gonna wanna keep their equipment there. From an insurance standpoint, they're not gonna be able to. So we'll have to have an alternative for them.
And, yeah, and the interim, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So that was Act One. Um, the second, uh, discussion is about encampment response. Um, I'm just saying, I'm gonna quickly turn it over to Mike, uh, but I'm acknowledging something that we discussed during budget, that, uh, encampment response for parks and open spaces is now going to be handled by, um, park staff. So Bob Pease is here. Uh, Mike's gonna give the majority of the presentation. Bob's here for questions. Still, um, in the process of transitioning, creating standard procedures for parks, but.
Mike, take it away. All right, well, good evening. I'll go through this relatively quickly. Uh, just, uh, give some big background before we get into what, what we did this year to kind of change some of our processes. Historically, when it came to homeless encampment, reporting and ultimately cleanups, it was typically done by the code enforcement team through either observations themselves on a weekly visits, uh, community, um, contact to the city regarding the homeless encampments themselves. Other staff may have noticed at park staffs as well, council members as well, that may happen as well. So that was working fine for a lot of years. Uh, what we started noticing, especially in twenty, if you look at the twenty-three to twenty-four expenditures, uh, we basically doubled one year our costs. A lot of that was based on the scale of some of these encampments. They weren't one, two tenths, they became ten tenths, twenty tenths, thirty tenths. Uh, so we did pilot, uh, late, starting late spring or the summer. It's actually doubling the amount of time efforts we're out in those, uh, open spaces and parks, especially the hot areas where we know we typically have encampments. And really try to get, uh, those sites observed, posted, hot team out there very quickly, um, to address these so they don't become bigger problems. Uh, we haven't, we don't know the quick, the full impact. We've seen any impact of that yet on our costs. Uh, because we, we're, right now, we're built through June. Uh, so at this point, uh, what I've heard from the code team is that, that's camps, we are still having encampments. Um, but they are smaller and we are addressing them quicker. Uh, so what we've done is we, we, at least twice a week, staff and multiple departments are going out to these sites, um, survey, looking for encampments. We are following our current process. Um, so when it comes to posting it, if we see an encampment, especially if it's occupied, we'll let the, uh, occupant know they have seventy-two hours if it's in an area that's not a high hazard area like a floodway. We also notify our partners in Community Connections so they can go visit these folks. And Jaylen will mention later that they try to make three contacts with individuals, um, trying to help them with resources. Uh, so they aren't just going from one community to another spot, uh, within the community or another community if that matter. When it comes to actual cleanups, we do contact with a contractor to go out and clean up these sites. We try to do those within twenty-four to seventy-two hours after the occupant is, has left the site. Uh, so we get it, try to get it cleaned up as soon as possible. With, with that timeline, seventy-two hours plus seventy-two hours, it can take a while to get those sites completely cleared. One of the things we're looking at too additionally is, uh, some of our, uh, open spaces and some of the public lands the city owns that aren't programmed, is looking at for underbrushes, areas that are really attractive for people to set up encampments. We're looking at those very closely, see if there's opportunities to clean those sites up. Uh, we're also looking at long-term planning of some of our sites, the stuff that we, obviously we wouldn't be doing anytime soon. But we do have properties the city owns. They're not programmed for anything. They're not planned for parks or open space, kind of surplus property. So we'll be looking at those as well. But in any case, those properties are attractive in a lot of ways to folks that are, uh, in the homeless type of world. One thing we'll note in our budget too is you'll see in twenty-three, ninety-five percent of our encampments are occurring on public lands. It's dropped about ten percent. So we're seeing an uptick in, uh, camps on private lands as well. Some property owners are welcoming, uh, unhoused folks into their properties. Uh, we had some properties in town that had, uh, people in RVs, people in tents in their backyards. In some cases, their front yards as well. We had some, uh, nonprofits of, also allowing for our encampments in their property. So we had to deal with some of those issues, uh, the last couple of years as well. So that's an issue, uh, one of the discussions we have about the transfer over, uh, parks, taking care of our land, open spaces from the camping aspect. So our code team can really go back and focus on private lands and private encampments as well. Um, so we are trying to balance how we work and how we're effective with our work as well. Um, this, this chart you've seen before, this is kind of the other jurisdictions around us. One of the things we'll probably, I wanna highlight on this chart specifically is our partner neighbors, uh, Northland and, uh, Undercorp Adams County. They just met with us about a month ago. Uh, both communities have park camping bans. Um, that's the similarities in those two. Uh, Undercorporated Adams County also has tent prohibited. Thornton does as well. And tent, tent prohibitions also is in our parks and our open spaces in Thornton. It's actually in Oregon. The other communities are kind of a little over, all over the place. A lot of enforced by the hours of operations. So that's how they do most of their enforcement. And it varies on how they actually enforce it. Park Rangers in some cases, PD in other cases. You, you name it, uh, Co-responders, uh, Northland uses those as well.
Real quick, before you move on, I have Jessica, Justin, and Cherish.
All right.
Back at the, um, when you talked about the difference between what code would be, uh, looking at versus parks, do we know or do you have, and you don't have to have it right now if you don't, the number of encampments that we're cleaning up, where are most of them?
Mo- mostly the encampments are the Niobra area, mostly along there.
I mean, is it mostly, is it mostly on the private where?
Go back a slide.
Code would be enforcing or, or mitigating, or is it more on the parks and rec, uh, areas?
So currently, uh, code compliance is doing most of it currently as we speak.
They're doing on the park stuff too.
On the park land as well.
But most of the encampments are actually on the park land.
Yeah, correct. The chart up there shows the percent of encampments on city property.
About eighty-seven percent.
Majority are actually, we're responding to, the codes respond, you are on city property.
My slide on here is hard to read.
Oh, sorry.
That's good.
The, uh, the only comment I was making about that is we have seen an uptick in private property, but we, yeah, majority isn't. And the size of them are open spaces are by far the largest. The only comment I was making about that is we have seen an uptick in private property, but we, yeah, majority isn't, and the size of them are open spaces are by far the largest on public lands. And the cost for sure is on public side.
Justin?
Uh, yeah, the uh tent prohibited ordinance that we have. Can that be used to remove encampments? I mean, the problematic encampments are the ones with multiple tents, so. Like I don't understand how additional. Ordinances about camping prohibited would. Augment anything we're concerned about is growing. The larger the encampment, the more the risk, the higher the cost is to clean it up, so. How much, are we primarily utilizing the tent prohibited ordinance to remove growing encampments?
So most of their. We can to some degree, most of what we're, what our or or what our code compliance team is enforcing is the accumulates of trash and junk essentially. Uh, the tent, tent enforcement um is not heavily, it's not heavily cited. It can be, but it would be, it would be more on the, at this point, be more on the police side, they would have to enforce attention.
I I think that's one of the options that we really want your feedback, right now, we're we're approaching this from a. From a junk and litter encampment process because that's been our 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 prior practice. One of the options is, you've got uh, you've got on the books a prohibition against. Tents in parks, you could expand that to open space to make it clear and you could develop. Uh, an uh more robust enforcement approach to those regulations to address the encampment issue. That is something that we would need to develop from an implementation standpoint to ensure that we have resources to it to enforce on. Um, on those regulations in a way that is responsive to what you all, what council wants to see, but I I think.
And I, yeah, I do think that's viable, I I do think from a, from experience and I think the code enforcement parks team. Sometimes um encampments rely on tents, um, but people get. Um, really creative with pallets, with um tarps, with other kinds of building materials. That they build their encampments, so sometimes we encounter uh tents and encampments, but oftentimes in um encampments. Uh, people are utilizing whatever resources they can find to build shelter.
And from a public safety perspective, encampments are really the challenge because. Camp, you know, the tent is just symbolic of the sh- the shelter and sleeping. The encampment brings health and hygiene problems because you're doing other daily activities, you know, um, eating. Garbage disposal, those things, and that's really the regulation, so if there was a desire to move to. Camping, that would more be a square, you know, a square response to the square hole, so to speak, right, so the tents. Work. But it that's not really addressing the problem that we're altering, which is a public health and safety problem, then camp is great.
So you say that you go through the open space twice a week?
Correct.
Okay, so when I see you go through the open space, because I can see you, do you go off the beaten path?
They go, so the, it's a partnership with parks and 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 code, parks, they do go where they're, I will call them the hotspots where we typically. They typically camp out, they do look for other areas, um, I can tell you our staff goes out twice a week from a code compliance side, looks as. Looks in every area they possibly can look, uh, especially along the Niobra area, the batting area, up north along I twenty-five corridor.
I was just gonna say that because that's generally where they're at and they're not.
And they often, even if we we clean up every week, we have cleanups generally, um. They they come back often as quick as we we clear them out unfortunately. Or they just move from one location or another, that's that's another anomaly we have, and that's, that's the challenge we have too, is is really. Not, we're not, th- this presentation, right, at this point, we haven't solved any issues because we are essentially telling you to move on. And without. Yeah, you could literally be ten feet further from where you were before and that's you reestablish your camp when you come back. So it is a challenge unless we had people there constantly looking for folks and constantly having to move on, but the challenge is where do they move to?
I think that's it for now. There'll be more.
So I wanna talk about regional efforts, I know Adams County came about a month ago to talk to council about their efforts, um. That, and I mentioned previous slide that our our enforcement is different from Adams County and Northland, which is not necessarily bad, it's just. We we were looking at it from a different angle, how we wanna enforce, we're more in the cleanup stage, Northland does, their coresponders will come out and actually. Meet you and potentially remove you from the site, and Adams County can do similar things through their park ranger program. Uh, one thing to note is the park ranger program is, they serve unincorporated Adams County, not the cities, so that's a program that. Ends when you hit a city limits. Um, and I mentioned earlier, right, what I was kind of alluding to is. What we do does impact our neighboring communities and 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 what they do impacts the city of Thornton too. I have a map, a couple of maps coming up where you'll see that, those maps just show a shift where the folks are camping, which is, it is what it is from that. Talking to other communities, that's that's the, what they see is they just see the same folks move from one area to another. Uh, so that's just a comment, when it comes to, uh, we certainly have some. Communication when it comes to Adams County, once a year, we share data with Adams County on our homeless, especially the encampment areas. And we we do think that's an opportunity where we can expand that communication, we do track individuals. As they go through, as they're going through the experience of homelessness with county and other jurisdictions, but when it comes to actual encampments. That's a yearly uh January timeframe when we look, we're working together on those type of uh. Of data sharing from that perspective. This map may look familiar, this is a map that Adams County provided uh about a month ago, um. As you can see, the concentration of, this is just unincorporated Adams County, they're showing their areas where their encampments are, um, for the most part. Uh, like I said, outside of all city limits, so the concentrated in areas that are very familiar to our areas when I show the next slide. City of Thornton, so the green dots are our representation where our camps are, I mentioned earlier, uh. You know, the I twenty-five corridor is, especially under the bridges, is a very popular area, some we have jurisdiction over, some is C dots. Some is Westminster, some is Brumfield, um, it's, but those are areas certainly in concentration that we're seeing. Any anywhere along where there's drainage ways, that that's a real popular area for the campments as well. So when you talk about opportunities, discussion items, um, we have several options, there there are many beyond what we've. Presented the three, uh, one would be just continue the current level service, the enhanced level service, which we talked about, which we would look at implement next year with the parks team. The by week, uh, twice a week inspections of the parks and open space. Posting the sites as soon as possible, have the folks move on, uh, clean up the sites as soon as possible as well. We could go to next, another level, uh, which this will require uh a comprehensive anal- analysis by the city. Uh, it will take time to implement, but we could, as we talked earlier about the tents, we could really enforce on the tent tent laws. We can enforce the hours of operations, which are six AM to ten PM in parks. We could talk about our open space hours of operations, there are not any hours of operation per se, we can clarify that by adding that. One area that we'd note that the trails should remain open with those, um, because they are offering pedestrian walkways. As long as you're moving, that's usually okay, it's when you stop as separate tents where the problems exist. And then we could look at our, um, actually start citing people, citations of individuals that are actually. Uh, they're breaking these laws or other laws within that factor, which that starts to in. Uh, for our court processes and folks' ability to pay citations. The third option is the most, uh, probably the most restrictive option that we have presented you tonight, it would be essentially enacting a full camping ban. So this would uh prohibit camping on all public lands and private properties. Um, and then enforce uh city codes by really going after heavy citations with individuals, especially repeat offenders. Uh, does impact the court process, does impact the, an individual's ability to pay citations as well. So from there, I'm open to any questions, and I know Bob's here for parks as well, if you have some questions for park.
Um, for option two, you mentioned that uh there would be citations that would impact the court. With the court, having the homeless court, is there a way to, uh, uh, maybe this has already been discussed, I would assume. Tying them together to help provide those resources for the individuals that were identified through those citations. I mean, I, I mean, I guessing from their presentations, from the judge's presentations, a lot of that was designed to. Help get those individuals into a more stable environment. Would that be a part of this? I guess there would probably be more people attending.
Yeah, I think it'd be something that we, if council wanted to go this way, that we'd wanna explore, um, I don't. You know, the capacity of the current program would need to be evaluated, um, I, but I assume that. I I can't speak for the judge, but I assume if if we were, and again, I think the citation is more a tool and and it wouldn't be the automatic thing, but to the extent somebody entered into. The the court system for one of these violations, I assume that we'd wanna try to explore those types of um. Um, kind of alternative approaches.
Our prosecutors obviously would be involved in that process and, you know, the the program would need to be expanded, um. But that would make sense because the consequences that you would be seeking and these individuals, these defendants would be very different than the common. Regular, so we would have to come up with a holistic response to resolve the problem rather than the cycle. Of just ticketing and bench warning, ticketing and bench, but it certainly that is. The direction that that court was going is a problem solving model.
So could then that citation be an automatic, whatever method of going in front of the judge? For the homeless court, if it was a homeless citation, it would be automatically homeless court.
It could be created that way, yes, and several communities do that.
Thanks.
Rivera?
Um, this tent and shelter thing, would that make them like? Fan all the time, like if people had like little pop-up? Things for parties and things, or is it just?
So the code was amended last year, I believe, uh, for parks to allow. Basically when you allow sunscreens. They have to be removed, um, uh, they they're only allowed when the park is open, so enclosure of or.
There you go home, okay, and then, um, like as far as other cities, when there's like data on, um. Implementing maybe these types of rules in number two. Does, does that affect the encampment numbers? After that, like have they, have there's been, has there been analysis of before and after on cabinet, encampment numbers afterwards? Of implementation of rules like that?
I'm not aware of it, um, we did survey jurisdictions um last year when we created this, it was last spring, um, and. It was interesting to note that there was a wide disparity in 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 the amount of responses, for example, Northland. Was a heavily, um, is heavily enforcing their camping bans, whereas Westminster was not as much. And, um, so I'm not aware of that, so I would love to have that study if it existed, um, I think a lot of what we're doing is anecdotal responses.
It's as as part of like. Where I struggle is like if we create more rules that we can't enforce, if we don't have the capacity to enforce the rules we have now. Like, is that really gonna be this, like, is that gonna make things better?
Yeah, I think we we were contemplating, and the options are endless, we, I think we were contemplating, option two is really about. An enforcement posture, I mean, you can, we can modify the code to make sure that it speaks to the the policy. Um, the policy goals of council, but ultimately, we have park closure rules right now, it's it's a matter of, you know, of enforcing it, so. Um, that's what I'm saying, if coun- if council wanted to go to, right now, I think park. Park closure rules are more for, if there's an issue in the park. It's a way to get somebody out of the park as opposed to somebody patrolling a park before it closes, making sure, you know, it's closing time to get on here. Um, so if, depending on council's policy direction, we would need to develop some sort of. You know, implementation plan to to make sure that the enforcement uh approach meet meets the policy goals of y'all, because to your point. We, if you all adopt a bunch of codes that say, you know, you can't do these things, but we don't really enforce on those, as we're not enforcing. Per se a tent ban, it won't really accomplish anything.
Yeah, I mean, cause like we made this code about the driveways and I'm seeing all kinds of new driveways pop up with. You know, extra wides, so it's like. Uh, you know, uh, it it's just kind of like, just, it's not, it's not really frustrating, I just really think like, how much work are we putting on our city staff or? Our code enforcement folks, the police to go around just policing, code enforce on things that like they, it's just not manageable, but. That's why I was curious, like, does, do, like. Maybe are are there creative ways to enforce these that don't require extra? People but will notify the public that. Closing time, you can't stay here, that's kind of where I'm, like, that's what I'm thinking, I I just, I don't know what. And then also, like, when you look at, like, full camping bans. What has that looked like in other cities? I guess I should look up some of that, but did you all, like, have in your research, see like? A a huge change, or are they still just camping and?
Uh, again, I think it comes back to the question of enforcement, so we did have a conversation with Northland. Um. Gosh, probably si- six months ago, five months ago at this point, and I do think Northland reported that they are. Aggressively enforcing their camping ban, and they are not seeing. Encampments grow in size and cost for removal, um, and so, again, that was anecdotal feedback from. Um, from Northland, that, um, as a result of an enforcement strategy, they are mitigating. Some of the accumulation of the size and the cost of mitigating those, that would, um, and they they didn't share a. Data, I don't think with us on that, but that was their anecdotal information sharing.
One thing that I think was noted though is they do have the same thought process, these folks are just going to somewhere else, that's less restrictive, so that's, that's the challenge is. Just because you're pushing them out of their community or getting up somewhere else, like Westminster. What we hear, they, if you're in their system, I guess, they don't really do a lot with you if you're on their parks, but if you're not, then they'll, their park rangers will talk to you, but.
So Westminster and park rangers?
That's examples.
One of the issues, like, for example, Boulder is probably the most robust system, um, they have their most robust problem. Um, and I think they view their program as successful, not because they're decreasing. Because they have a homeless court that meets uh weekly outside providing services, again, it's very holistic in response. But I think the success comes from their their claim that they could, they can honestly say that the the encampment problem. Is mitigated, meaning while they're getting people tenting outside and living in places, they're not, they're not seeing the encampments grow. And that's really the focus of all these regulations, is the danger of encampments, because it's an improper place for people to be. Engaging in in daily activities, all the people that are living in those and occupying those places, the neighbors surrounding it and the the city general, it just. Those kinds of areas are not equipped for daily eating and cooking, toileting, bathing, sanitation.
I mean, I look at the camping ban. At Northland and unincorporated Adams County and we don't, so yes, we are seeing an increase because they are being pushed out. Into areas that don't. Justin?
Yeah, I think the, the key component to all of this is the after removal of a component. The citation with the homeless court and all of those things, we can't really approach it, I think it was mentioned. In the same way that we would with other types of repeat code violations, because, um, citations and. Even the most extreme, right, criminal uh prosecution. It doesn't really solve the issue because it's a revolving door and they'll come back, and there's just really no, nowhere for them. Uh, to live, it's too expensive, right, they've got mental health and drug issues and there's all. So many issues that I can't even mention them all, but they all accumulate, so, um. But we absolutely cannot let these encampments grow, so any, any type of enhanced enforcement. I would only support if we did the backend of that as well, and so. Whatever we end up coming to my request is that the staff will, and 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 also in collaboration with the municipal court. With a really solid, you know, means tested or or evidence-based plan to. To to handle the backend so that we can try to, over time. Get these people out of the revolving door of living in encampments, and I think part of that is the next part of the. This whole presentation, which we're gonna get to, but, um, the other part of it is revising our our justice system and our. After enforcement, so. after enforcement. So that would be my biggest request is that, you know, if we do decide to up the ante and, and, uh, have stronger enforcement. I think the community is asking for that, but we need to do the right thing on the backend.
I have Dave and then Jessica.
I mean, you know, I mean, I don't have the support on this at all, but I mean, personally, I would like to see the backend some robust help, but personally I'd like to see number three, but I, I'd compromise to number two. As far as like dedicating police resources and things like that, it's more cumbersome when you're continually getting welfare checks and, uh, basically unwanted parties all day long and you're responding to the same people and your responses. They look fine and then you drive away knowing that you're going to get the same phone call a half an hour ago because you have no enforcement mechanism to address any citizens' concerns that are calling in. So while I understand there's, we want to be sensitive to the needs of everybody, we also need to be sensitive to the needs of the citizens that are in the area that are making these phone calls to the police, asking for help. There's a reason why there's, there are repeated phone calls that nobody can seem to help with is because every time the police go out there, there's no enforcement or solution mechanism for them to rely on. So absent the fact that this party is, you know, has a warrant or whatever the case may be. Basically what happens is they walk away and because there's nothing that they can do. So I'd like to see at a minimum, number two. Um, and I, I understand that there needs to be a backend support system and I understand that we need to, you know, work with the homeless court. I think that's a great, that's a great function of the city, but not, I mean, not doing anything on this and just kind of letting it kind of stay the same, just stop doing anything either.
Yeah, I think one of the things that resonated with me when the commissioners came was the faster enforcement, reduced cost of the encampments. And they also had pitched the idea of entering into some of the IGA's with RTD and being able to attack some of those encampments sooner. So, um, is that in the plan if we were to do enhancements? Are we going to further our arrangements with other jurisdictions governing bodies so that if we're going to enhance the enforcement, then to your previous point of them just moving to a different property and us not being able to do anything. Um, understanding what David's saying on three, but I would lean more into two. And see how that moves the needle and then enacting those IGA's also so that we have more enforceability or at least more reach um, with it. And then perhaps we're having the same conversation 12 months from now, but we'll at least have new data to see if it's effectively reducing the costs of the encampment removals and, um, you know, and, and everything again, that was mentioned with the, the court systems on the, on the backend side of it. So I think before we went to a three, two is right, but then there's some other measures that we can implement too. And then reassess.
Jessica.
Um, on that same note for, uh, the park rangers, I know that Adams County is doing that just in there. Right? But I really remember when they first came forward with that, that they said that we could partner with them or somehow it be included in that. Am I?
Yeah, no, you're not. We, we talked to them and Commerce City was the other entity they worked with. They, um, they helped set up Commerce City's program. So they offered consulting services, but they, they were not providing first, and they are not providing ranger, ranger services. And then, um, I, uh, Adams County expressed, um, and, and actually, uh, we met with their lead ranger today. Um, they expressed ongoing willingness to participate and, and advise, you know, whether we pursued a ranger program or just looked at different ways to model those services within our existing uh, operations. So, but from an IGA for them to provide service, that was, I, I had the same, I heard the same thing too, but that was not what they were actually talking about.
And then for the homeless court piece, uh, is, uh, maybe that's where the Adams County, whatever resource can help supplement that. And, um, I don't know what the family justice center is doing as of any component of that that would be able to help, but obviously the, this would impact the courtroom and the judge and, and the attorney's office significantly. But I, it does have a different, uh, it would be much different than what anybody else around us would be doing because it's actually not just putting up a ban. It's also supporting their situation. So even if they did get pushed off into whatever neighboring community, there would still be a piece of them that had to come back to the homeless court here that would then hopefully give them some of those resources. So it does seem different and, and that next level, it's, it's not just banning and then move along.
I've heard two people specifically call out the second option there to start enhancement, adding the additional support with the courts. Is that where everybody's head is right now? So we are all in agreement on number two with those additional services?
So I do want to make sure that you see the third bullet there. I think we, we would recommend some code clarification that the hours of operations for parks also apply for open space. So I think we would come back and I don't know if there would be any other slight code modifications that we, but for, for two, we still might be asking for some action at the council to, to make those provisions as clear as possible. We'll look to make sure if there's any clarification that needs to happen to strengthen the linkages between enforcement of these code provisions and the, um, homeless court as well as the other takeaway that I heard from, um, from the discussion here.
I cherish. And then Roberta.
Um, I just want to make sure that we're going to post that out because I know that like Sky Park does not have a poster. I asked previously that it get posted up there. Um, open space, moving, change those hours, like make sure that it's in signage in there too. A lot of people can see.
Roberta.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. Um, and then, um, like, gosh, I forgot what I was going to say. Yeah. I, yeah, the, oh, is that like a whole like ordinance change? Is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah, I think to, to Tansy's point, we need to bring forward some code modifications and also what we'd like to do is develop out a, an implementation plan to get an, an understanding of kind of the enforcement posture and what that would look like.
Yeah, I think like signage along. I mean, I just can speak for like, where I look award two, it's some of the signs just in general are a little rough on the parks and like, I know the one Brookshire Wicklow, you can't even read it on the backend. It, I don't even know what it says, like all the letters are falling off. Um, and it's like, yeah, having hours and stuff would just be super helpful. And I think people would be less, there'd be some people that would be less likely to just hang out there all night. Um, and definitely on the open spaces, because I know that's a, a big issue in Ward two.
Next one.
I will briefly outline HOT's current level of service during some statistics. We will look at comparison jurisdictions, show our utilization of Adams County programs, and then review some emergency sheltering programs that council can consider and discuss. Our homeless outreach team of four is out Monday through Friday, eight to five. We also have evening and weekend hours. We're responding to calls to our hotline assisting individuals with reported encampments as well as taking requests for outreach, educational presentations, providing information about HOT services and resources. We host weekly walk-in hours at Community Connection. So although anybody can visit our office anytime, Monday through Friday, eight to five, to use our technology, cruise resources and get support. These weekly walk-in hours are specifically dedicated for time intensive tasks where the whole homeless outreach team is available to, for example, get people on the housing waitlist or secure identity documents. We host a monthly resource fair that we call Empowerment Expo with lots of resource providers, government entities. People come to that for a hot meal, supplies, and they can check a bunch of things off of their to-do list right there on site from health screenings, mental health support, um, care for their pets, et cetera. We also can case manage up to sixty-five clients at a time. We'll work closely with them to set and monitor goals. And this is where we see really positive outcomes such as housing. And along the way, we might see folks get a job, secure treatment services, um, secure counseling. The length of time for case management and the type of goals that are set are, are really as unique as the individual themselves. We might work with someone for six weeks. We might work with them for six months. As long as they're showing up alongside us and engaged, we will continue to serve them. As far as encampments, as mentioned, unless the encampment poses an immediate health and safety threat, HOT will make three attempts to reach individuals. And after that time, they'll notify code so that they can assess the site for cleanup. And as far as severe weather activation program, our pri- primary responsibility is that outreach, finding our people, getting them into shelter. At least one HOT team member does report to the activations, uh, at the Margaret Carpenter Recreation Center. To your point, council member Sandgren, this was not always the practice for the whole season last year. It was something we started emphasizing mid-season. So it could be that the, um, the absence was noted in the first part of the season. Let's take a look at our, our data. In two thousand twenty-four, HOT connected with nine hundred and eighty-four unduplicated individuals. Eight hundred and fifty of that were new clients, never before encountered. When we look at two thousand twenty-five, from January through the end of August, we have eight hundred and fifty-eight unduplicated individuals with six hundred and forty-seven, seven of them as new. So we are on track to meet or exceed last year's number as we step into our cold weather season. Regarding housing, seventeen were housed by HOT last year and twenty-nine were housed by HOT so far this year. Not represented on the chart that I'd like to highlight is earlier this month in September, we secured housing for an additional fourteen, making home possible for all those extra people. For swap vouchers in two thousand twenty-four, we provided three hundred and forty-seven vouchers, each one of those representing one hotel room. And in two thousand twenty-five so far, uh, on the eve of our, um, season kickoff, we're at one fifty. The hotline calls last year were at five thousand thirty-three and so far we're at two thousand one ninety-nine. Again, with our cold weather season approaching, we expect to hit or exceed that same number. This chart was shared during our last conversation about homelessness and is here for our reference tonight. Overall and comparatively, we just want to showcase that Thornton offers a high level of service with the number of staff that we have, the number of outreach hours that they complete, the number of clients they're serving, case managing, our homeless court and prevention funding, which includes rent, mortgage and utility assistance.
Chris.
On the previous slide where you were showing individuals that it's secured housing, we have an additional fourteen. So that's almost triple the number from last year. What is, what is helping to create that outcome year over year, almost three times as many being placed in housing?
We're doing more case management. When we're really coming alongside someone and working with them consistently, staying in touch with them, working towards goals that we're co-creating and they are involved and engaged and want housing, beautiful things happen. In our email to council earlier this year and during our April presentation, we highlighted the importance of our collaboration with Adams County. And during the board of commissioners' presentation, they emphasized the same. Staff are in daily communication with Adams County and surrounding jurisdictions to coordinate care for this population. Thornton has an IGA with Adams County to share data and staff participate in a number of committees on a routine basis to keep that communication flowing. And as far as Thornton's utilization of Adams County programs specifically, we thought it would be helpful to showcase the numbers. So from left to right are the name of the program, a very short description of the program. Um, the number of clients that HOT has referred and the number of clients that are actually utilizing the service in two thousand twenty-four and in two thousand twenty-five. We're going to go through each of these. So council has an awareness of the programs that we're drawing on and why there might be a discrepancy between the referrals we make and the utilization. Built for Zero, Built for Zero is a national movement that helps communities end veteran homelessness. Adams County and the cities within it meet to identify veterans in all of our service areas. And then we create a by-name list. And we go through that list every time we meet to move veterans from homelessness to housing using Veterans Association issued housing vouchers. The Colorado Taffy Program, and I'll say that every, every veteran that we reach, we refer to this program. Uh, last year we referred six with eight participants and this year we referred four with three participating. Colorado Taffy Program is a federally funded voluntary program that provides assistance to youth that are transitioning out of foster care on, into life on their own. The program helps youth finish their education and helps to place them in housing. Often referrals come through the foster care system. Um, but this year we did have HOT connect with one individual which was referred and is utilizing the program. The third program down is the Encampment Resolution Rapid Rehousing Program. Adams County is currently piloting this project in unincorporated Adams County. They will rehouse clients from specific encampments within their jurisdiction only. So they do not serve clients within Thornton encampments. During Adams County's presentation, they did mention this program, so we included it here. Uh, as there is a small possibility that a client of ours from a Thornton encampment could spend a night in an unincorporated encampment that's selected for this program and be moved into housing, although that has not happened yet. The next program is the Familiar Faces Rapid Rehousing. It's supported by Adams County and aims to serve the top thirty utilizers of the swap program by volume, providing one hundred percent rent assistance for up to six months. The goal is during that six months, the client would be transitioned to stability and self-sufficiency. This program was established in late two thousand twenty-four. So far this year, we've had four clients on the frequent utilizer list and all four have been housed this year. The Long Distance Travel Fund, supported by Adams County, provides one-way plane, train, bus ticket or gas vouchers to get folks from Thornton to an area outside of Denver Metro when they have identified a family or friend that's willing to say, yes, you can come live with me. Yes, I will support your transition out of homelessness. Um, they also can get a Visa gift card. While the majority of our clients don't have friends and family willing to take them in and, and that's why they're without a home, we did find a couple of people, three that were, were referred and utilized the program last year and two of the three this year. Lyft, Adams County funds ride share rides for our clients. They allocate three hundred bucks for us every month on a use it or lose it basis. And we get our clients to case management, healthcare and other appointments. And last year we did a good job of using our allotment. This year we are two. We had one hundred and fifty-one rides last year with one hundred and five this year. Homestead Advancement is a housing and support program for people that have nursing home level needs that have spent at least one hundred and twenty days in a nursing care facility. Um, it provides a set number of housing vouchers. So when the program opened in two thousand twenty-three, there were fifteen vouchers available. It provides a set number of housing vouchers. So when the program opened in two thousand twenty three, there were fifteen vouchers available. At that time, we did not have any clients that qualified. And now we have one client that qualifies, but there are no spaces available. There are no vouchers available. So we can't make that referral, which is why that number stands at zero. The Pathways to Stability Program is for those that are close to being housed, such as those that have a housing voucher but have yet to find a unit that will accept that voucher, or for those that have a rental agreement but can't quite enter the property yet, maybe because of renovations or circumstance. So clients can receive up to thirty days of temporary housing through Inwood's Health. Last year, we referred eight with all participating, and this year, nine out of ten of our referrals participated. Renewal Village offers permanent supportive housing, meaning clients with really high vulnerabilities that are unable to achieve self-sufficiency or stability independently, maybe because of a disability, can stay in apartment units permanently. In this particular program, which started at the end of last year, Thornton was able to refer two clients, both of which were housed this year and are shown in the two thousand twenty five utilization. The additional seven showing in the two thousand twenty five column were referred this year and are in the One Home Housing Waitlist System. The waitlist for that, for housing programs within the region can vary depending on the vulnerabilities of the clients. Just to give you an idea of the two that we have this year, one was housed after seven months and the other was housed after five months. Safe Parking is for those living in their vehicles. The sites are typically located in parking lots, usually of nonprofit faith-based or business lots, and they're typically only utilized after hours for people experiencing vehicular homelessness to park overnight. Last year, we had no referrals to Adams County located programs. And this year, we had one referral for one client that stayed one night before he decided the program wasn't really suitable for him. There are some criteria involved with these safe spot parking lots that we'll get into a bit later. We've talked at great lengths about swap tonight. I'll just mention that of all of the programs listed here, that one gets the asterisk for the most time-intensive for our staff. There's a lot of coordination that happens from October through April for that program. Lastly, Up and Adams is, was an internship program that offered sheltering. When that was the case, we referred eleven clients. It changed, and there's no longer a sheltering component. And that's because the program wasn't meeting the objectives that Adams County had anticipated. So they, they ended the contract. And now this, the workforce program still exists, but again, not the sheltering. Are there questions on this slide? So you've heard about HOT's level of service, seen their data, and have an idea of the monumental work that they're doing to change lives and even save them. Now we will transition into some emergency sheltering programs that council can consider. We know that homelessness has existed since housing has existed. Even in ancient Rome, homelessness existed. And council knows the problems are big and complex. And some of the really big lifts, such as creating and maintaining affordable housing, are part of the city strategic plan that you heard about earlier tonight. For this presentation, we'd like to focus on some smaller lifts and potential wins. And so I will briefly describe each of these programs, and then we will go into a higher level of detail. Each of these four programs have been outlined in the National Alliance to End Homelessness as interim strategies for responding to unsheltered homelessness. So that's why they were selected. Supported encampments are managed outdoor spaces where people can legally camp in tents or other structures with resources and infrastructure provided. Safe parking programs are a parking lot where people experiencing vehicular homelessness can park overnight without fear of being towed to get in or harassed. They can use cars, vans, or RVs. Pellet Shelter communities are quick to deploy prefabricated structures that can be quickly assembled and provide some temporary housing. And tiny home communities are comprised of small standalone structures that are normally four hundred square feet or smaller that can provide more durable temporary housing or closer to permanent. With all of these programs, there are operational best practices. Number one, there should be some level of security, and that can shift depending on the size and scope of the program. Number two, there should be sanitation services, restrooms, washing stations, which can range from small handitizing stations to full-on showers and trash removal. And then, of course, support services such as case management. Some benefits that all four of those programs share are outlined there. The first is reducing scattered encampments and creating a more structured, centralized location for the encampments. So if we reduce occurrences and visibility from around the city, we can lower overall neighborhood conflict around the issue of encampments. However, we do need to acknowledge that if somebody has one of these programs in their backyard, there will be problems. Health and safety improvements are typically found compared to unsanctioned camping areas. And these provide campers with a greater sense of stability. Residents don't fear from being moved one place to another, and they're not having their items and their lives disrupted with every encampment cleanup. Service connection is also made simpler with a large number of clients in one space. Instead of HOT commuting to several different encampments, they go to one site and can serve a high volume of clients all at one time. As far as considerations, these programs typically have rules, code of conduct, governance structure that help to guide the campers and keep the site clean and compliant. These programs do come with a price tag, but they also may come with an opportunity to collaborate with other partners existing or new. With any of these programs, we would need to consider extreme weather planning and also analyze public safety impacts. As far as limitations and challenges, site selection can be challenging, especially as we consider neighborhood concerns. We also need to acknowledge that none of these programs will serve every one of our homeless clients. And none of these programs are intended to be a long-term housing solution. Each of these following four slides will cover additional benefits, considerations, and limitations that are specific to each model. Pictured within each slide is a Denver metro area example, and although we haven't calculated costs, materials, vendors, anything like that, we're just scraping the surface to introduce you to these models. We have identified on a four-point scale approximate costs with the first dollar point you see here being the lowest cost. So supported encampments are managed outdoor spaces where people experiencing unsheltered homelessness can legally camp in tents or simple structures with resources and infrastructure being provided. A cap hill example that operated during the pandemic is shown in the photo. It no longer exists. On a four-point scale, staff are expecting this to be one of the least expensive options. As far as additional benefits, this model would likely be implemented the quickest of all four that we'll share tonight. The tents and makeshift structures that are scattered throughout Thornton could come to one central location, which could reduce neighborhood conflict. And again, we talked about the efficient service coordination. As far as considerations, I've seen this done a couple of different ways. Campers can either bring their own tents and their own supplies, or the city could supply tents so that you get more of a uniform look, such as shown here. That also helps to create a certain standard of insulation and comfort for, for campers. As far as limitations and challenges, site selection, the tents are most impacted by weather. They're the least durable of all of the options. It's not a long-term solution. Safe parking is again, when a group of people living in cars have a designated place to stay. Typically, participants do need to leave the lot during the day. Pictured is Arvada Covenant Church. It partnered with Colorado Safe Spark, Safe Spot Parking Initiative. That is a nonprofit organization that dissolved last year. This parking program is no longer in existence. Again, on a four-point scale, staff expect this to be one of the cheaper of the options. Some other benefits, if we're reducing unsanctioned vehicle camping in businesses and residential areas, we could get fewer complaints and calls for service. We can reduce completely unsheltered people because oftentimes the vehicle is the last line of defense for somebody before they are completely unsheltered. So these programs, especially when accompanied by mechanical services, can preserve that asset and keep a hard top roof over a family's head. Also, as far as a benefit, there are two examples of this currently within the county. So there is an opportunity to expand from what they're already doing. Other considerations, we need to look at vehicle operability so we don't end up with a bunch of inoperable vehicles that need to be towed at an expense to the city. Also, driver criteria, is the driver licensed? Can they pass a background check? Do they carry insurance? As far as limitations and challenges, we're coming back to site selection and neighborhood concerns with this one. And then it's a small fragment of the population that we can serve because most of our clients don't have vehicles. The third of four options is the Pellet Shelter. These are modular prefabricated structures that can be quickly assembled to provide the temporary housing. These units are more private, they're lockable, and they're appropriate for two people. Pictured at bottom left is an Aurora community. That community has been dismantled as we're awaiting the opening of their Aurora Navigation Center, a six hundred-bed facility in November that we'll have access to. On the four-point scale, Pellet Shelters rank two of four dollar signs, or mid, as my six-year-old nephew would say, mid-range cost. Benefits are it's inexpensive compared to permanent housing. Again, these are quick to deploy, they're prefabricated, ready to go out the door. We do see immediate improvements in weather protection with these because of the increased durability, as well as with privacy, giving residents more dignity compared to tents or safe parking lots. They are modular in nature, so they can be relocated. However, they're not intended to be assembled and disassembled on repeat because the integrity of the structure would be compromised. And lastly, these provide for improved safety, health, and stability for the residents. As far as considerations, these are customizable, so they can have different levels of insulation, heating, and cooling. They are not equipped with plumbing, so you won't find kitchen or bathrooms within these units. Some communities that stand up pellet shelters have communal areas where restrooms, showers, et cetera, are offered. As far as limitations and challenges, the appearance of these structures are not typically what we would see for housing within the city of Thornton. So we're still going to have site selection and neighborhood concerns. And these are, are not designed for permanent living. We saw a lot of these come up during COVID to meet a temporary need for a defined or anticipated period of time, but they're not intended to be long-term. And there's, there's very little space inside of these. So outside of a bed, there's not a whole lot of space to move around. These are some tiny homes from beloved community village at Forty First and Monroe in Denver. There are small standalone structures that provide fairly durable housing, the most durable of all of the options that we'll look at. Tiny home villages often operate as transitional communities, helping people from housing into more permanent, long-term, from homelessness to more permanent, long-term housing. This is the most expensive of the options that will present. Some benefits are that these are the most, most durable, they operate as transitional housing as discussed, most permanent, and they provide for the greatest privacy, stability, and comfort. These are also appropriate for small families, making them more versatile than the other options. As far as other considerations, they're the most expensive and the slowest to access because they need to be built. They can be designed with kitchens, bathrooms, and more substantial insulation. So they create a more livable and dignified housing option for our homeless community. And again, we see site selection and neighborhood concerns. So with all four of them, we'll have site selection and neighborhood concerns. This is a roll-up just detailing each of the four options presented and their corresponding benefits, target demographic, implementation considerations, and limitations and challenges. We can come back to this as needed. Discussion and direction. So option number one is that we continue our current, current levels of service. We continue referring to Adams County. We continue working with our partners and identifying new partners, just as we ordinarily are. Option number two is that we would investigate feasibility of one or more of the emergency housing options that's been shared tonight. As far as considerations, operations and support services, costs, potential partnerships, and program location. Chris?
You mentioned the Pellet Shelter doesn't have, or it can't be heated or cooled, but no kitchen or bathroom. What about electricity? Is there electricity ran to those, minimum?
Yes, we can have electricity.
To speed things up, I would say I would support something along the lines of safe parking because I think it does serve part of the community. I think it's probably more manageable to find a partner for a location and cost is minimum. Pellet shelters and tiny homes might be a larger hill to climb, and I don't think the sanctioned encampments would be well received. Safe parking is low-hanging fruit in my mind.
Justin, then Karen.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. One is, in all of these programs did, in your work, did you identify community partners and, and potential partners out there that could help us implement or design? What kind of roles would they have in these programs?
We really, we did not do a deep dive into any of the research for these programs. We wanted to just showcase surface level, here's the program and what it looks like, and then hear from council where your interests lie. And then staff will investigate materials, vendors, potential partners, costs, sites. We do have an idea of some local and national partners that we could consult with and interview based on the guidance that we received from council tonight, but we haven't gone through that full deep dive at this point.
I, I would like whatever area, well, clearly, I think this complements what we talked about earlier with the, all, all the other two main topics that we've talked about already. Especially when we're looking at people who are just living in encampments in open space. This is something that could be a preventative measure to help people from, who are at risk of becoming the, you know, victims of living out there in this, in Uh, you know, victims of living out there in this in the streets and, uh, having to deal with the worst of the worst when it comes to homelessness. And then, um, I think that anything that we do should also be, uh. Incremental approach to, uh, fully fresh pledge program. So we can build on. You know, what we start with, and then it it leads to bigger partnerships and, um, more opportunities. Whether it's through creative funding. I don't think, my point is, I don't think that whatever, anything that we do, we can do it completely alone. And more should we because we talked about partnering with Adams County. There's lots of nonprofits out there. That help with these kinds of things. And so. I I think that a good starting point is to really maybe dive into the safe parking. Because it addresses some of those things that I talked about. It addresses the population of people who are, who have vehicles. And I'd like to emulate the existing program of Adams County. Where they have a set of rules around, uh, targeting a specific population. Who is very vulnerable into becoming even more, uh, you know, falling into a more vulnerable position. Um, you know, living on the streets. So these are people who have cars, obviously, and people who likely have jobs. And, um, you know, aren't going to be staying there during the day, those kinds of things. I think that's a program that we should. Uh, emulate after, and I would also love to see the, um. Doing this with a partner. I don't know if we're equipped as a city or ready to take on a program like this. When there are community partners, Almost Home is a perfect example of a nonprofit that has many years' experience. Running and implementing safe parking programs. And I know for a fact that they're interested in in doing more and expanding on that. So I I would like to see us, when we do that investigation of of safe parking, if that's what the council wants to do. That we we look at partners like Almost Home and that we. Design this program to serve a very specific population of people who are employed and people who have. Recently lost their their permanent housing and are at a high risk of of losing their jobs because they don't have. A place to, uh, you know, have a an address or a place to to, uh, to. Settle for the night. They're always moving around. I also think this addresses the issue of complaints that we receive in our own communities. From residents who are concerned about people parking in front of their house. Because these, there are people, there is a large population of of people living in their cars. We don't see them because they're moving around. All over the metro area and that they, um, and and a lot of them have have jobs. And so we want to make sure that, I think this program is a great opportunity, uh, potentially to help them, uh, get back on their feet and and get them. Moving in the right direction instead of risking falling down into, uh, really, uh, extreme homelessness living on the streets. So. Um, yeah, I agree with, uh, Chris and think that that's the, that that's the path that makes the most sense, uh, to me when we. Look at these emergency sheltering programs.
Karen.
I agree with number two. I will say that I actually asked some questions to Adams County about the safe parking program. I know at least one of those two locations happens to be a church parking lot. I love the fact that you can partner with the church. There is signage stating what the hours for safe parking are. But there is an Adams County employee that goes around to those locations in the morning. To make sure people have cleared out by the suggested time, whether it's nine AM or whatever. So just be aware that, you know. That would be staff time that we need to utilize as we're looking at that, but it should be very easy to partner with churches and other community partners like that. And an easy program to implement.
Um, all we're doing is looking at feasibility for programs right now, right? So it's like, it's just seeing what the cost is and who would partner. So could we do two?
Yeah.
Um, the pallet homes and the parking things.
Others? Justin?
Um, yeah, I'll okay, I'll be okay with looking into others as well. Um, again, the. I want to build on top of things, you know, whenever we start, we can grow into something that. Build on our own successes. And, um, I just want to do a plug. And I encourage you, anybody who's interested in this. Who is going to NLC to sign up for the mobile workshop for the tiny homes. For the, uh, the organization is called The Other Side Village. And, um, NLC is going to take us to, uh, a tiny home program like we saw that's much larger. And surprisingly, um, according to their website, um, and stood up and operated entirely without. Single dollar of government funding. So it would be very interesting if you're interested, you know, I'm just going to put a plug for that if you're interested in learning more and, uh. And just kind of see what a really solid partnership, because I'm sure the city of Salt Lake City has. Some involvement one way or another, even if they're not funding it. So just want to put that out there that we could, we have an opportunity. To go and see something, uh, very mature program.
Others, Dave, Cherish, let's go.
I'm a solid one, but. Any of that, I think there are some. Logistical safety concerns, large safety concerns on a lot of these things that haven't been addressed. But. I defer to the group.
No matter what, if anything from two is going to go forward, I think a community. Pretty significant community outreach would have to be done. I would support number one.
Cherish.
So there is a consensus at least to look into safe parking. What about the pallet homes? That consensus to get, and this is just data gathering at this point. This is not making a decision that is looking at feasibility, potential locations. Potential partners before, because I believe we have to make ordinance changes in order to move any of these ideas forward. So is there consensus on pallet homes as well?
Yes. And feedback.
Can we, um, it like, um. Like any feasibility studies, can you put on there what the community outreach would look like, what community meetings would look like?
Sure.
How robust those should be for the company of these two.
Yes.
And how long has Adams County had the two safe parking spaces? It's relatively recent, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. I don't have the dates of that yet, but.
You can get that later.
Being managed by our state. Okay.
Because I would love to see statistics.
Okay, one of them opened October eighth of twenty two. That's the one at Nativity Lutheran Church. And the other one on sixty fourth and Federal opened in October of twenty four.
I love statistics, uh, excuse me, statistics about what they're seeing there, the challenges that they brought forward, and if it's actually making an improvement on helping people find housing.
Sure.
And and one more thing is, I think. It was mentioned about what ordinances or what kind of legal changes would be required. I think that should be included in.
Yeah, to understand what it would take.
Yeah.
You got it. Thank you.
All right, keeping in mind that at ten fifteen, we still have two items on the agenda.
Thank you for the direction.
And and I will say from staff's perspective, I don't believe, uh. One, the the next item was initiated by the staff, uh, recommended. It's not time sensitive. I can speak for the city train, but I think this is coming back at the request of council. So I think could could also be.
The oil and gas presentation was also because council to ask for it.
Right.
What is our schedule look like, though, over the next few weeks?
Not good.
Right. I mean, the EV charging one seems pretty simple that if you read through the packet, it's either follow the state's model or opt out and do our own. And the recommendation is opt out and do our own.
We can move very quickly through this, that presentation.
You just gave the whole presentation.
You gotta call out during the strategic plan.
I did, yeah. Good to go. Uh, so we're seeking council's direction here on House Bill twenty four eleven seventy three. This law was passed in, which is intended to encourage more standardized and streamlined local permitting processes for EV charging uses. Um, and so we'll just provide a quick overview of the law, what, um, what Thornton has to do. Um, and then discuss alternatives and staff's recommendation. And so this law requires the city to take action in one of three ways, adopt cities model code, the state's model code. Um, this defines terms, establishes where these uses can go. And then also provides development standards, which includes setbacks, lighting, screening and and other things. It also establishes permitting procedures for these uses. Uh, we can adopt our own rules and regulations that comply with the law. So this one would place the responsibility on the city. To comply with, um, with all aspects of the law as it's written in in the law itself. Or adopt a resolution stating that the city wishes to, um, does not wish to change its existing land use code and opts out of compliance. With the law. We have to take action by the end of this year. And as far as the city's, um, existing requirements as they pertain to EV charging. Um, so the development code does already allow EV charging as a primary use. And the new code, a vehicle fueling station includes both gasoline fueling stations and EV, um, chargers. And then, uh, those are governed by the underlying, the standards of the underlying zoning district. Um, and these uses are allowed in the city's primary commercial districts, those being general commercial, regional commercial, and business park. Um, the city also recently adopted the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code. This one requires many new developments to provide accessory EV charging units. So all this to say is Thornton is already fairly permissive and accommodating. When it comes to these facilities. Um, and then as council is already aware, it's worth noting the city is currently developing an environmental sustainability master plan. Um, with the support of the sustainability consultant and the sustainability task force. Um, and through this process, there will likely be recommendations for council consideration relating to expanding EV charging network throughout the city. Um, and so through that process, council will have further opportunity to evaluate, um, these issues. And then, so any action on. This law does not preclude the city from implementing future regulations for EV charging uses. Uh, and so in light of all of that, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution opting out of compliance. With House Bill twenty four eleven seventy three, alternative three there on your screen. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Any objection to the recommendation?
No.
Thank you.
Hold you.
So this was, um, a presentation on oil and gas that city council requested. Uh, I emailed you tonight the, a spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet was, uh, you asked us to compare our existing code. To, uh, our development agreement. We have one development agreement with an operator who has an approved, uh, location approved by Thornton. At, uh, E four seventy and I twenty five. And then it also compares it to Adams County regulations and it compares it to the state energy. Uh, carbon management commission's regulation. And the final column of that spreadsheet that you have makes a proposal. Or at least something that we're considering from a legal perspective and maybe council wants to consider too. As to amendments to our code based upon those, uh, various regulations. So that is, I realize many, many pages and it is divided into categories, but it does. Uh, it was an effective exercise in that we have some proposals in each category of regulations that we could consider. So that is the document, uh, the spreadsheet with, which compares all the regulations. The presentation tonight, though, I thought it was important first to take a look at where the oil and gas results are in, uh, Thornton. I didn't have a complete picture and, uh, then compare those to existing setbacks. So that we can see, uh, how many new oil and gas operators could potentially come to Thornton. Or, uh, where are plugged and abandoned or low, uh, low producing wells exist. So with that, uh, we will, uh, discuss those issues. Uh, as you probably know, Senate Bill nineteen one eighty one gave more powers to local documents to make necessary. And reasonable regulation on the surface impacts of oil and gas development. Prior to that, we looked at things mostly like wind needs, um. And surface impacts. Um, now we can do a little bit more technical regulation. And, uh, the most stringent regulation between ours and the state does apply. There are some limitations to that, but certainly not as many as previously. Thornton's, uh, regulates oil and gas in chapter eighteen. These regulations were adopted in twenty seventeen. They were challenged. And some of these were set aside by a court. But what remains are two paths to authorizing oil and gas operators to operate in Thornton. One, they can do a permit. Which requires a public hearing before city council. Or two, they can negotiate an operator agreement. And that is one of the things on the spreadsheet. Um, we showed the provisions of our current operator agreement. The operator agreement is going to be a more stringent document. It contains a lot of these, uh, requirements you're going to see in some of the Adams County. Regulations. Um, we have two applications that have been approved. Uh, one you're probably aware of is the Washington pad by Civitas. They have an operator agreement. And again, that's at I twenty five and E four seventy. And then we do have a produced water pipeline, uh, with Pioneer that went through the, a similar process. Both applications were approved by operating agreement. And again, those are enhanced protections. Uh, Mike Garrett is our local government designee. He is the contact with the ECMC, the state, uh, commission. And it receives all of our oil and gas related notices from the state. We do have a reverse setbacks provision. Those are setbacks, setbacks provision in, uh, section eighteen, six eighty one. And basically ECMC regulates oil and gas operations in Thornton as well. Those are very stringent principles. They have been improving those. For several years now. Uh, also, uh, CDPHG, the Air Quality Control Commission and their Water Quality Control Commission. Uh, have regulations for oil and gas. Um, these are much more stringent. Air quality in particular, the state has really gone after. And put in place a lot more stringent, uh, regulations. We do have the opportunity to, uh, provide comments in both of those areas. So when a new operator, uh, puts in their air quality plan, for example, the, we would, um, have notice of that. And we would provide our own comments as to restrictions, monitoring, we thought would be appropriate. So, uh, we've worked with an environmental scientist, Dresden Knard. And she, uh, is, we've worked with her on our oil and gas development agreement, and she's put together, um, these maps for us. Uh, you can see we have thirty one active wells in Thornton. These are either producing, they're temporarily abandoned or shut in. We have two hundred and thirty three plugged and abandoned wells in Thornton. You can see most of those are concentrated up in the northeast section. Of Thornton. And then we have one pending application for the Washington pad. So you can see what we all probably suspected is that, um, we've, we have, uh. Active wells, but we have mostly temporarily abandoned or low producing wells that we also need to take a look at. They, uh, have, well, some of those were. Uh, also plugged and abandoned long before new plug and abandonment regulations came into play. And so, um, those are older P and A's too. So this, this here shows, uh, setbacks, uh, that the city has in place and that the state ECMC has in place. In incorporated Thornton. So those gray areas, those splotches in the middle there that don't have anything in on those, that's unincorporated Adams County. So you can see from this map, even with Thornton setbacks and the state setbacks. There are very few areas that a new oil and gas operation could happen in, um, in Thornton. The red marks on that map would show the available spaces. And then finally, this map shows us the cities, the states, and Adams County setbacks in those unincorporated pockets. So this further limits the areas where new oil and gas operations would come into Thornton. So that is clearly not our issue. We have strong operator agreements for the one, uh, company that is coming in. But we most likely will not see a lot more new oil and gas, um, operations in Thor.
Justin?
Um, operator agreements, those are with the ECMC or from Thornton?
They're from Thornton.
They're from Thornton.
Okay, and are they purely administrative?
No, they have to go to council for approval. And so the only
But not a public hearing.
But not a public hearing, correct. If they didn't choose to negotiate an agreement with us, they would have to meet our other requirements in our code. And then we would, they would also have to go through a public hearing. And so given that information, that's good baseline information. I think one thing council could consider is a potential inspection program. We don't currently go out to these well sites. We have data that shows the state goes out approximately every two years to these well sites. And if we were to make code changes, I think initially those should be in the area of establishing an inspection program. Giving us authority to go onsite and to have the operators reimburse us for those inspection costs. We could also consider other fees and fines and also some regulation as indicated in that spreadsheet I gave you for low producing and plugged and abandoned operator requirements. So I think what we were recommending initially is an initial run at our oil and gas code that would allow us authority to inspect these well sites, to require the operators to do more reporting and make their records available to us and to require reimbursement of our inspection costs. If council wanted to be more active in this area. I do have some costs associated with this. I did present this to the Environmental Sustainability Task Force. One of the things they said is they wanted council to be realistic that this was a commitment of funds on an ongoing basis. They also wanted, for example, on this map, to show what was going around our boundaries to see, you know, what oil and gas sites could come in close to our boundaries. So they suggested that for another map. I don't have that map. That would take additional time. But those were kind of, I think those were their two comments in general. They supported an inspection program and us taking a look at all the wells up north. I wanted to note that I have some information from Adams County. In a twenty twenty-four article, I want to quote Greg Dean, who is their LGD and does an excellent job there. They inspect every well in their county and they have six hundred producing wells and three hundred and eighteen orphaned wells as compared to our number. They have much more there. And it, it does indicate that state inspectors get out about once every two years. So they have their operators reimburse for their inspection costs at, at that time it was three hundred and fifty-eight. Greg recently told us that their current cost is three hundred and sixty dollars per well site for inspections. And in twenty twenty-three, Adams County had two inspectors. They made eight hundred and eleven inspections and found about a third of the wells, mainly orphaned wells, were not in compliance. So that is with either state law or their regulations. And they do have an IGA with the state where they are the eyes and ears of the state under that IGA and can report violations there. And then for the operating wells in Adams County, by example, eighty-eight percent complied with the rules and all the wells for the two largest operators, Chevron and Civitas, were all in compliance. So that's just by way of example, what they're seeing with two full-time inspectors. It would, so that Adams County, Greg did tell Mike that he, you know, he can, he can look into this and he thought they might be able to do it. They were raising their fees. They were at three sixty. They're raising their fees in, in twenty twenty-six for well inspection and they may have additional administrative fees for us. So if we went with Adams County and entered into agreement for them to do our inspections, it would be an approximate cost of two hundred thousand dollars a year to inspect all of these well sites. We also had this price with our environmental scientist group, CCGRS, and they would be willing to inspect our well sites for three hundred and fifteen dollars per well site. So a little bit of a savings there, more closer to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year if we hired our inspector on contract. And we had, we had much satisfaction with CCGRS in the work that they've done for us. And they've been on site for us before and they've done a good job. So those are two viable options. If you were to hire an inspector, most of those costs go up to ninety thousand dollars for salary plus benefits and whatever else that is. I am not sure that two hundred and thirty-three well sites merits a full-time inspector in Thornton. So one of these other two options may be better if council wanted to consider an inspection process.
And those are reimbursable through the, from the operators? What about the orphaned wells?
Well, that's the problem. A lot of the orphaned wells, you either cannot find the operator or they are just non-compliant, even with the state.
And do we know how many orphaned wells we have? I mean, it says thirty-one active wells, but
You know that?
It's not a big number in Thornton.
Yeah.
I remember.
And I know there's a state fund as well.
There is, but there's not a lot of money in the fund. So we, some of the operators are putting a pool of money in with, with to help the state out to, because what the remedy is, the state goes out and actually remedies those sites because they often are leaking and other issues that are going along. Most of those were kept in abandon in the eighties and before seventies and eighties. So they're, they have a lot of work to do on those, those wells.
I did look at the state site. It's like forty-seven thousand now on the list of wells that could be plugged and abandoned. So it's a big issue for the state, a big cost.
And we have one operator here in town that's, we call it real low producer. They get like a barrel a week if they're lucky, but they hold those leases essentially is what they're doing out there and waiting for Civitas or the Severnons of the world to do a big drill operation and they get paid as they abandon those well sites. We are, that's the most activity I get. And I do, I send council information when there's something that's going on that's significant. Usually they're replacing a pump, which is not that significant. But when they are kept in abandoning those, I do know that, because they have, that's when they have the big rigs out there. And then folks are like, hey, they're drilling. You would all know if they're drilling. The only area they drill in Thornton would be the Washington pad site. Just, just saying we had that site real briefly. It's been delayed because there's an eagle nest on that, adjacent to that property. So we don't know when that may be drilled. They've appealed numerous times at state and they've got denied every time. So at this point, they're waiting until the eagle essentially leave to be able to get anything out there. So I'll notify council at which point they are able to drill.
I'm pretty sure the eagle has to leave and not come back for this.
That's pretty much it, yes. And it could be there a very long time. It can generational too. That's always happens, happens too. So I don't know. We don't know. That was approved in twenty twenty-two. So if we're going to three years since that was approved, so we'll see.
And a couple other issues. We do work with monitoring where there are hearings coming up on operators that aren't doing what they need to do. We are currently in front of the ECMC with KPK on a hearing process, trying to get them to use some of their bonding and clean up a portion of property that was contaminated. So we then, if we need to, we, our staff is prepared and experienced in going to the state and arguing for our needs with operators that are somewhat delinquent. One other recommendation here is a baseline audit of our well sites. So for twenty thousand dollars, so this is a lower cost option, and Mike and I have talked about this and we think we can cover it within our two departments. We could have a baseline audit of Thornton's well sites done and completed potentially by the end of the year. And that audit would be, again, an environmental scientist doing a, a look, a desk audit if you will, going through all of ECMC's records, determining where our operators are delinquent, where there have been problems that they haven't followed up on. And then we could pursue those with the state just from, you know, looking at, and we'd also have a baseline file of all of our well sites and know what was out there, who the operators were. And that's another thing we had thought about in the regulations is to have them register with us and so we can learn more about some of these well sites and these operators. But that baseline audit, and then they could also go onsite. Obviously, they couldn't go on the well pad unless we adopted inspection provisions. But they could do, they could go onsite to a lot of these older wells and from the boundary, take a look at those and see if there's anything of immediate concern that's visually that would come from a visual inspection, like dead vegetation or use a FLIR camera and take a look and see if there are any emissions that they can pick up with a FLIR camera from the boundary. So that's another recommendation here is that we pursue that baseline audit. Again, get our files up to date and see what's going on in the field. So that's another thing we want to counsel direction on.
I revert it and Justin.
So I'm obviously, I think you know that I'm interested in all of this and I think the main thing I was looking at was, I'm glad you had the cost for the inspection. So I was wondering, you know, out of the two hundred thousand for Adams County or the one seventy with the contracted group, like would Adams County's inspectors be union labor or would it, would that be like, are they unionized in Adams County?
We would do that by contract. And so I don't know that. I don't know.
I mean, I was just thinking out of interest in making sure that the labor is like represented, represented then one way or the other, it doesn't really, it sounds like both would be kind of a, you know, quality product. It just, that was kind of just where my head was, was like, are the both of them would be contracted, obviously, but are the Adams County folks represented by a union? Then that would be an interest, but if not, then the other. If not, then the other's fine. So yeah, I'm interested in, I'm definitely like the, the baseline audit. And then I also wanted to know Civitas, I know that they were supposed to plug some orphaned wells, right, as part of the agreement to, weren't they supposed to do that to, to drill?
Right.
So have they done that yet? Or is that like, when we drill, we do that?
Yeah, they hold the leases as long as they can. So they, they'll drill first and they'll abandon those wells. Everything, basically what we call downstream from where the flow lines are, they have to go and evaluate those, cap and abandon lower. And then if there's any orphaned wells they come across, they're supposed to take care of those as well.
I think they can't do it until they drill because they're holding the lease through those minerals. That's right. And so they
So they'll sit there with them.
They can't.
I, I've not. So I mean, it doesn't make any sense to do a bunch of work and you're not getting any.
Well, and they can't, if they were to plug and abandon those, they would lose the lease.
Okay. Yeah. So anyway, I mean, I, I guess just conducting a baseline audit is just super important in general. So I think, yeah, I'm supporting all of this and drafting the code changes for the inspection program and the fees and fines and everything. I can't, I think like, thinking about other things at this point, like I think this is a good place to start before we decide to continue on with adding a bunch of stuff that would delay these good things that would be a good start. So I don't want to try and eat the whole elephant right now, if that makes sense.
Right. And, and that's kind of why we, we put it in this order because really you can't do justice to inspections. We can do, again, the border inspections. And I think it's a good thing to do for that price. But unless you have authority in your code to go onsite and really inspect these oil and gas well sites, you know, a thorough inspection would require us to have this jurisdiction that we would get through a code revision.
Thank you, Kenny.
And there could be other recommended code revisions. And I don't know if you want to wait until twenty twenty-six or put some of this in place now, but what an audit will do and what a review of the regulations that we've done here will do. And once we see what we have, it will inform how many revisions we actually need. Because there'll probably be some key things that we really want to do and, and otherwise, as you can see, there's not, not any new development coming our way. Thank goodness. So.
Justin?
So what kinds of recommendations do you think this audit could lead to after it's completed in terms of policy? I mean, I guess it depends on what we find, but just the general kind of theme of what, what types of regulation changes could result from that?
Well, I think one thing is you're going to find out how old these P and A's are. You're going to find out if there are any concern with shut-in wells or other wells. You could find that are low-producing wells, you know, in terms of emissions. If there's emissions, it's a sign. If there's dead vegetation, it's a sign that perhaps something is wrong and you need the state to go out and do a super good inspection out there. And we can cooperate with the state more easily with these baseline, with this baseline information and get them out there to, at a baseline, enforce their regulations if we find the problems. Because again, they're not getting to all of our well sites and that's the issue. So when we get eyes on them and we, we learn whether there are violations and there have been violations in the past, we would work with the state, I think, to come in and, and do stuff. You know, I mean, to make them come into go compliance through the state process as soon as possible. But again, a more, the most thorough inspection is going to be if our, if we amend our code to give ourselves jurisdiction to go onsite and then we have an inspector go onsite to each of these and really do a thorough inspection so we can find out what we can about potential emissions, issues with the well.
Okay. And then you said we could potentially complete this audit by the end of the year. So would that require an amendment to the twenty twenty-five?
No, like I said, I think Mike and I have talked and we can probably find it funded in our, in our, yeah. And I'd rather get it done because it's really going to be informative.
Would you be able to completely, do you know for certain of that? Would you be able to determine that before?
Money in the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've talked and we can cover it.
Already confirmed? Then I, I would like to see if council agrees that we do this and that we also have the first reading of this ordinance on September twenty-third and the second reading on October twenty-eighth. So I would ask that
Reading of what?
Of the, the ordinance that would be required to
Allow us access to the site?
To give us authority to do this.
Inspection authority.
Will the language be ready by then?
Well, the thing about this is, under your new development code and probably previous, you have to take these text amendment to the planning commission. And you also have to do a ten-day notice. So if you really wanted some of this initial you know, code in place so that we could get on some of these sites potentially this year, we would have to go to the planning commission probably on October seventh. And we would have to do first reading on October fourteenth. And again, these are going to be general revisions to our code, anticipating we would want to put more meat around these potentially in twenty twenty-six. So first reading on October fourteenth, second reading on October twenty-eighth. So you could get it done.
But the baseline audit is really doing a visual inspection. It's not getting onsite.
It's just a visual inspection.
So rushing that doesn't gain us a whole lot. It lets us start that process earlier this year, but
That's true. That's true. It would allow us potentially to get onsite, but a lot of the time on that audit is going to be a desk audit. It's really going to go, it's going to create files for us that show our well sites, electronic files.
And to set it up for the onsite inspection.
Right. They're going to go through ECMC, Air Quality Control, et cetera. So.
So if that's the case, then the seventh and the twenty-eighth then?
So the, we could take the planning commission on the seventh, first reading to council on the fourteenth.
That's what I meant, yeah, fourteenth.
And then the second reading on the twenty-eighth. If you wanted to get these on, in place, we are prepared to draft this pretty quickly from our research. So.
Because I would like to give us a chance to complete this by the end of the year. Like you said, we could.
Right. And then it, it depends on the commitment financially to the inspection program too going forward. It really does. So.
But I don't think that the ordinance is required to do the baseline audit. Like those are mutually exclusive, like they're, they're, they're not tied together. You don't have to have one to do the other, right?
We need the ordinance to give us authority to
We would only be doing a perimeter inspection of our well sites with this audit. Yeah. And so the inspection program itself, if we wanted to go onsite, you need to give yourself authority in the code. And there's a potential
Different things. The audit is one piece and the onsite inspection is what we're saying. We, we want to do both, but I'm saying the audit itself is separate from, then the actual inspections require the code change. But those are two separate things. They're not tied together. So the audit can happen whether the code changes or not this year.
That's true. The desk audit and the periphery view of the well sites can happen.
But to Justin's point, the faster we can get this in place, the faster we can get started on the second piece of that, which would be the inspection piece.
Right. And these, these provisions, I'm telling you, we can get done within a week or so. We've been looking at these. We, we think this is the first first step in this process if we're sure we want to have an inspection program that goes onsite going forward.
So my question is, can we get the, the ordinance to give us the authority completed? Like as you said, it would be on the Like as you said, it would be on the uh, planning commission for the 7th and then.
First reading on the 14th.
The second on the 28th.
Yeah. If you wanted it in place by the end of October, that way we would have a potential to go on-site if they saw issues of concern from just reviewing the swell sites from the outside.
That's what I would want.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any objection from council on this one?
It's a lift, but we can get that done on that timeframe.
I think it's important.
Great. Well, that's the direction we need.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Any board or committee reports? You counsel just, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Um, so uh, Kent and the rest of uh, Colorado Highway 7 Coalition has a letter uh, sent to CDOT for to, for them to prioritize the CDOT or the Colorado 7th Corridor and Motivability Hub for statewide transportation plans in a 10-year project pipeline. So we're just advocating really hard that that gets done or included. Any objection to me signing or us signing this?
Okay.
I'm got a more points.
A discussion item?
So a few things. First, I, I think that, you know, as we're getting closer to a legislative uh, session coming up next year, I think it would be wise of us to start uh, discussing legislative updates from our legislative team and our, our state lobbyists, um, starting now really to get an idea of the bills that are being uh, worked on right now before they get released. I think that one of the challenges we've had even, even going to weekly updates during session is that we are always trying to play catch-up on that. So I, I would love if we could get um, essentially mostly year-round legislative discussions on, on potential bills, which would give us the opportunity to um, use our lobby team to reach out to legislators to help uh, influence bills before they even become into existence. And uh, that's the first thing. And I also think that we should go look, take positions on bills that go beyond our traditional bills that we follow through uh, CML because they could have a significant impact on our residents being uh, also residents of the state of Colorado. And I think a great example is uh, Senate Bill 71 from last year, which was a uh, uh, increasing the protections of the 340B prescription drug program. And I know that doesn't impact the city's laws and policy directly, but it would impact thousands of our residents. And I think that it is within our responsibility to, to weigh in on these issues that we would deem important. So I would suggest that the council should have these discussions um, on bills that we might want to support that go uh, above and beyond uh, some of those bills that we traditionally follow, like uh, you know, the, the land use policies and things like that. I mean, I just think that there's just so much at stake here and that our residents are, you know, also residents of the state of Colorado, obviously. So I think I'd like to consider, just become more active in the legislative uh, process year-round.
I'd even go a step further and say we should be helping draft legislation that helps our residents.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at. And I think that we've kind of been, at least since I've been on council, we waited till middle of, or beginning of session to jump in and by then it's.
They're writing bills now.
Yeah, they're writing bills now. I, I feel like, um, now the question I think is, how does that impact our contract with our lobbyists? And if we do have to increase the contract and get more services, I would be all in support of that to make sure that we have a stronger voice at the Capitol.
So if I'm not hearing objection from the council, can we look into what it would take to start that process sooner? And maybe our lobbyist actually has a recommendation too, because she does this with lots of different groups.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we'll, we'll follow up. Uh, the planning sessions in October are quite long. And so there are no planning sessions in November. So um, but we'll check with availability.
Just getting to December.
Well, and even an email update from her would be good.
Yeah, if we could, if we could do an email update and then plan something in December, that might be, give her some more time to prepare and um, again, both of your October meetings have gotten fairly long.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
So I would also ask our staff to provide updates to the council on um, submitted projects and proposals uh, that we plan on or are currently submitting to Dr. Cog for funding through uh, projects like the TIP or the RTP. This would be very helpful to get knowledge of the details of these projects ahead of time. And particularly, I, I would really ask that we get that to me by next Wednesday because there's a AdCog uh, sub-regional forum where we do actually need a quorum to vote on projects that are going to be included into the RTP from that sub-regional process. And having advanced knowledge of what Thornton staff is advocating for will get, put me in a better position to um, advocate for us when the actual votes come in and we decide amongst all of our Adams County peer cities on, on which ones to put into the RTP.
Steph is working on that communication. I think it's coming to council infinitely. I suspect by the end of this week. That's, yeah.
Right. And then going forward, just regular updates on, on not just RTP and TIP, but all sort, all the types of uh, transportation funding, um, efforts that are being done from staff, uh, advanced knowledge, whenever, you know, whenever you submit, please inform the council. So we can do our work with the, on the um, legislative side and on the boards that we've been assigned to.
So I, I think we are doing routine grant updates in writing and are you looking for that to happen in a different forum?
Okay, yeah. Then, then uh, I guess highlighting the ones uh, uh, for these uh, these bigger like cycles.
Okay.
Would be helpful. May, maybe I'm missing them and maybe it's something that I need to do better.
I'll, I'll confirm and make sure that we, we um, raise the profile on the um, on the, really you're looking on the intergovernmental.
Yeah, I would say just maybe even specifically highlight ones to the, to the uh, the designated board member for Dr. Cog and Nina, but really Dr. Cog. And I don't know, I don't know enough about the other boards because I'm not on them. But there is a lot going on with Dr. Cog and having these, these kinds of uh, you know, insight from the staff, um, really helps a lot. And I know Kent is great. Um, and he's very helpful. So I think that, that would be a good person to reach out to.
We'll evaluate those existing practices and make sure that we coordinate more closely.
Anything else, Justin? Dave?
Just one thing. I send everybody a resolution sitting lovely in front of you, like consensus to add that for next week.
I appreciate the rewrite.
I just had a slight rewrite on it as well, that I just kind of looked at. And it's just to create more conformity from all of them. It sounds a little Danish on the Charlie fortune. It goes in a cowardly and heinous political assassination that damn demands unequivocal and vehement condemnation. Well, that's what this whole thing is about. Even with the, the attempts on President Trump, we don't even go into that. It just says in the office that's co-founder, turning point, he's a conservative activist. That's the job title and then that's the name. And that's what's consistent with every other paragraph. We don't go into the lengthy descriptions and the overly, and not overly, I don't agree with it, you know, but the extra is what I think needs to be cleaned up. We don't even put that emphasis on a presidential assassination attempt. And he is an activist. So I think that there's, it's just written a lot more. And please don't take this the wrong way, David, but like, vanish and like really putting this, that one, we're elevating that one over all the others by talking about unequivocal and vehement condemnation. We don't say that about a presidential or, or dead senator or dead uh, representatives or senators. I mean.
So and after political assassination, delete that demands our unequivocal and vehement condemnation.
That's the whole point of it. We're, we're doing that with all of the attempts. So um, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the need for the extra wordage there. Particularly when I elevate a presidential assassination or any of the other.
If we move that, that demand our unequivocal condemnation down to the next, like whereas these incidents demand our unequivocal.
A hundred percent. That's what I'm saying. It's like an overemphasis on one over others, but I think there's higher offices.
All of them.
Right, yeah. The higher offices that been deserved, I mean, I condemned the Trump assassination attempt on the dais last year. So.
Are we okay with just moving that to a whereas?
We'll make the adjustment and I'll, I'll reserve comments.
Did you get, get that, Kristen?
That is a whole co-founder, returning point. It's just a job title and the name is every other paragraph. So we don't need their accomplishments in there is on that one. That paragraph obviously stands out to me.
I would leave co-founder, turning point because otherwise it's not the same because the rest of them will have titles, president, representative.
Group CEO, conservative activist. That's their job.
Yes, Dr. Tom's not conservative activist. It's co-founder, turning point. So you could take out conservative activist and I'm good with that.
Yeah. Again, it's just a lengthier description on one.
Be good with removing conservative activist, but let's leave his title in there just like the CEO.
That's, yeah, that's fine with me too. That's just that one.
Describes his.
Yeah, that's first. That's fine. But again, over descriptions, lengthiness.
All right. So we're, remove conservative activist and then.
The, the second part of this.
That demands our unequivocal would be a whereas.
It's freestanding.
Yep. Because that applies to every one of these, not just the single. You good with that, Dave?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll read that.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? All right. Anything else? Anything else of anybody else in the meeting? All right. Good night.